Where no titles were used, we just talked about what the boards and commissions were doing and what information we had, what was coming up on council, and we could just talk together as long as it was an open meeting. So for me, I got to learn a lot more about the people that I'm working with, and that really helped us. But to the incoming council, I would like to say, be kind to each other. It's really important that we respect each other and that we can agree to disagree and laugh about the mistakes that we make, because we're going to make mistakes. And we're going to lose our patience, and we're going to laugh at each other, and then at the end of the day, be glad that we had the opportunity to even be able to do that in our city and in our country. And I want to expand on our staff, because you have to know how amazing they are. When we talk about working regionally, our staff steps up. When the Marshall Fire happened in Lewisville, we have the past mayor of Lewisville sitting there, our staff did everything they could to go help Lewisville and Superior through that horrible time. They were doing double jobs, some of them, working for Longmont and for Lewisville. We have worked with, our city staffs have worked with Loveland, Fort Collins, Boulder, on many different things where we had, especially during the pandemic and through the floods. So we need to be really proud of them. Our staff has done such an amazing job on our resilient St. Vrain that they've been recognized by the United Nations and are using, are asking for the expertise of our staff to help them work with other cities within the United States, but also with other nations, on how do you build back resiliently from the floods, the disasters that happen in your areas. So I'm really proud to have been part of a staff that knows how to do that, does the hard work, but passes that knowledge on. And there's, I don't know if you want me to say this, Harold, but I'm going to.
Look at his eyes.
But our city manager has been asked to be part of a panel from the University of Harvard on how does AI impact a local municipality as we move forward with this new technology. So everybody just be kind to each other, work with each other, knowing that we're going to make mistakes, but that we can move through it. And for that, I thank all of you. And now it is time for public invited to be heard, and I have no one on the signup sheet.
Public invited to be heard for us?
Yes, for us, for this council. And then there will be a public invited to be heard when we swear in the new council. So with that, seeing no one on the list, I will close public invited to be heard, and we are going to be, do we adjourn this?
No, no.
Okay. And I'm going to turn it over to the swearing in of our new council. And, Crystal?
Thank you, Mayor Peck, Council. First, we have Matthew Popkin for Ward Two, so we'll go ahead and swear him in first. Okay, Matthew, if you can raise your right hand for me, please.
This is my right hand that appears on the screen.
And repeat after me. I, Matthew Popkin, do solemnly swear.
I, Matthew Popkin, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The laws of the State of Colorado.
The laws of the State of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances of the City of Longmont.
And the charter and ordinances of the City of Longmont.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of council member Ward Two.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of council, uh, city council member for Ward Two.
Upon which I am about to enter to the best of my ability.
Upon which I am about to enter to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Stand over here, and here is your microphone. Okay. If you can raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jacob Dalton Marcing, do solemnly swear.
I, Jacob Dalton Marcing, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The laws of the State of Colorado.
The laws of the State of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances of the City of Longmont.
And the charter and ordinances of the City of Longmont.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of council member at large.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of council member at large.
Upon which I am about to enter to the best of my ability.
Upon which I am about to enter to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Crystal.
Okay, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Crystal Prieto, do swear by the ever-loving God.
I, Crystal Prieto, do swear by the ever-loving God.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The laws of the State of Colorado.
The laws of the State of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances of the City of Longmont.
And the charter and ordinances of the City of Longmont.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of council member at large.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of council member at large.
Upon which I am about to enter to the best of my ability.
Upon which I am about to enter to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
If you can raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Okay, yes.
I, Susie Hidalgo-Faring.
I, Susie Hidalgo-Faring.
Do affirm.
Do affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The laws of the State of Colorado.
The laws of the State of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances of the City of Longmont.
And the charter and ordinances of the City of Longmont.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of mayor.
And I will faithfully do, um, do the duties of the offices of mayor.
Upon which I am about to enter to the best of my ability.
Upon which I am about to enter to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And now may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm supposed to say, signed I.
See, I don't know how to say it, so.
Signed I works.
Okay, signed I. That motion has been made by Counselor McCoy, seconded by Counselor Christ. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So this council is adjourning, and we'll turn it over to the new council. to order. I would like to ask for a motion to allow Councilmember Popkin to participate virtually due to illness.
Second.
Okay, so that motion has been moved by Councilmember McCoy and seconded by Councilmember Marcing. Can I have a vote? All those in, oh, we don't have it, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed? Nope, so that passes unanimously. Welcome again. Okay, so in accordance with the rules of procedure and the rules for providing public comment are as follows. Only Longmont residents and employees of the City of Longmont may speak during first call public invited to be heard. You must provide your address at the signup sheet before the meeting, or I will not call your name. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Anyone may speak on second reading or public hearing item, and you are asked to add your name to the speaker list for the specific item before the meeting. Anyone may speak during final call public invited to be heard. Members of the audience shall refrain from disruptive, vulgar, and abusive language, applause, heckling, and other actions that interfere with the orderly function of the council. So can we have a roll call, please? I got to put mine on here.
Councilmember Christ?
Present.
Councilmember Marcing?
Here.
Councilmember McCoy?
Present.
Councilmember Popkin?
Here.
Councilmember Prieto?
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So are there any agenda revisions from the city clerk?
No, Mayor.
Okay, are there any motions from council for future agenda items? Councilmember Christ, let me get that, hold on.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have recently returned from the National League of Cities training. It was a very good training, as, and many people commented on it, and one of the things that was particularly interesting is there was a lot of conflict management type classes, and particularly group sessions meant to show us how to have better civic engagement, such as citizen assembly type scenarios and/or civic assembly processes. And I would like to direct staff to come back with, to city council with some suggestions and actually just more information about how we might create that as a council.
Oh, let's do a second, and then we can have discussion. So.
I'll second that for discussion purposes.
Okay.
Mayor Hidalgo-Faring, thank you. I would, I would like this, thinking about what you're, you're getting at here and everything, I think this is really what the underlying intention of kind of what Coffee with Council may have, maybe should evolve to, and, and that way people are, are feeling more engaged and, and connected to us as a council and as civic leaders in a way that helps us gauge what the community interest in a particular issue is. You kind of described this to me earlier, and I, I think that's kind of a, a good direction to maybe evolve that, that aspect of council's interaction with the community members. Maybe that's what it should evolve to at some point here.
Okay, thank you. So the next on the queue is Councilmember Marcing.
Thank you, Mayor Hidalgo-Faring. Very pleased to be able to call you that. Just a question, Councilmember Christ, when, because I'm the new guy, right? I don't know what, what I don't know yet. Talk to me a little bit specifically about some of the takeaways that you got from those courses that you would like to see maybe applied to this, that brings about the motion, just out of curiosity, so I have some better understanding of the context that you're bringing.
Part of what made this training so effective is we sat together as, you know, a group of people from different walks of life, you know, different city scenarios, and we would throw out one suggestion, and then everyone would, would rate it basically from, I'm very cool about that, not interested at all, to, I'm very hot on that, and there, and then there was a, an interplay of discussion that helped us hone that down to what should the suggestions be to council, what should the, you know, what are the parameters of solutions, which oftentimes things come to council and we feel that we don't have enough information, or that we're maybe a little too attached to a solution right off the bat, without having other people who are not necessarily advocates or protagonists on the topic, but are members of the community, you know, kind of like from our boards, sit down and say, hey, you know, I hadn't really thought about this, but I guess what I'd like to see from my, from my city is X, Y, and Z, and then as a group, they talk about the pros and cons and how that might play out. And it was amazing to me how, and, and we did this in several different sections, so it wasn't just one group that this worked well with, but seven people who don't know each other, sit down and throw this out, and they very quickly came up with collaboration and some good topics that are brought back that, you know, you'll see in the future of, oh, yeah, I hadn't thought about this, but another person brought this up to that, that civic engagement portion. So I became a quick believer and said, this is something we need to consider. I agree with Counselor McCoy, that that is something that maybe Coffee with Council could advance to, you know, maybe instead we, we come in, we're asking questions and whatever, maybe we're sitting down, we're, we're discussing solutions, and sometimes really.
Okay, I would like to now call the December 2nd, 2025 Longmont City Council Regular Session to Order. I would like to ask for a motion to allow Councilmember Popkin to participate virtually due to illness.
Second.
Okay, so that motion has been moved by Councilmember McCoy and seconded by Councilmember Marcin. Can I have a vote? All those in... Oh, we don't have it. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed. Nope, so that passes unanimously. Welcome again. Okay, so in accordance with the rules of procedure and the rules for providing public comment are as follows. Only Longmont residents and employees of the city of Longmont may speak during first call public invited to be heard. You must provide your address at the sign-up sheet before the meeting, or I will not call your name. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Anyone may speak on second reading or public hearing item, and you are asked to add your name to the speaker list for the specific item before the meeting. Anyone may speak during final call public invited to be heard. Members of the audience shall refrain from disruptive, vulgar, and abusive language, applause, heckling, and other actions that interfere with the orderly function of the council. So can we have a roll call, please? I gotta put mine on here. Councilmember Crist?
Present.
Councilmember Marcin?
Here.
Councilmember McCoy?
Present.
Councilmember Popkin?
Here.
Councilmember Prieto?
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So are there any agenda revisions from the city clerk? No, Mayor. Okay, are there any motions from council for future agenda items? Councilmember Crist, let me get that hold on.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have recently returned from the National League of Cities training. It was a very good training, and many people commented on it, and one of the things that was particularly interesting is there was a lot of conflict management-type classes, and particularly group sessions meant to show us how to have better civic engagement, such as citizen assembly-type scenarios and/or civic assembly processes. And I would like to direct staff to come back to city council with some suggestions and actually just more information about how we might create that as a council.
Oh, let's do a second, and then we can have discussion. So...
I'll second that for discussion purposes.
Okay.
Mayor Hidalgo Ferreyra, thank you. I would like this... thinking about what you're getting at here and everything, I think this is really what the underlying intention of kind of what Coffee with Council may have maybe should evolve to. And that way, people are feeling more engaged and connected to us as a council and as civic leaders in a way that helps us gauge what the community interest in a particular issue is. You kind of described this to me earlier, and I think that's kind of a good direction to maybe evolve that aspect of council's interaction with the community members. Maybe that's what it should evolve to at some point here.
Okay. Thank you. So the next on the queue is Councilmember Marcin.
Thank you, Mayor Hidalgo Ferreyra. Very pleased to be able to call you that. Just a question, Councilmember Crist, because I'm the new guy, right? I don't know what I don't know yet. Talk to me a little bit specifically about some of the takeaways that you got from those courses that you would like to see maybe applied to this that brings about the motion, just out of curiosity, so I have some better understanding of the context that you're bringing.
Part of what made this training so effective is we sat together as, you know, a group of people from different walks of life, you know, different city scenarios, and we would throw out one suggestion. And then everyone would rate it basically from "I'm very cool about that, not interested in all" to "I'm very hot on that." And then there was an interplay of discussion that helped us hone that down to what should the suggestions be to council? What should the, you know, what are the parameters of solutions? Which oftentimes, things come to council and we feel that we don't have enough information or that we're maybe a little too attached to a solution right off the bat, without having other people who are not necessarily advocates or protagonists on the topic, but are members of the community, you know, kind of like from our boards, sit down and say, hey, you know, I hadn't really thought about this, but I guess what I'd like to see from my city is X, Y, and Z. And then as a group, they talk about the pros and cons and how that might play out. And it was amazing to me how, and we did this in several different sections, so it wasn't just one group that this worked well with. But seven people who don't know each other sit down and throw this out, and they very quickly came up with collaboration and some good topics that are brought back that, you know, you'll see in the future of, oh, yeah, I hadn't thought about this, but another person brought this up to that civic engagement portion. So I became a quick believer and said, this is something we need to consider. I agree with Councilman McCoy that that is something that maybe Coffee with Council could advance to. You know, maybe instead we come in, we're asking questions and what have you, maybe we're sitting down, we're discussing solutions. And sometimes really big things come out of that, as we were talking with the last council. So, just asking for more information, what that might look like and how we would apply it in our city.
So would they be bringing back the formula or the system that was presented at National League of Cities? Would they be bringing, would they be creating a new system? And then, so that's two questions. And then the third is maybe a suggestion, because I do like where you're going with this, and especially with new faces. Would this be better, a better format, or just that we would be able to address the issue and have that open conversation during our council retreat to set some time, so then it's more free-flowing rather than a study session or a pre-session, but we actually have members of staff all together?
You know, I think that's a great time for us to get comfortable with the process. There are organizations out there who discuss this, and we had about three different points of view on that. Some were very conflict, you know, resolving conflict, and some were very solution creation, almost think-tank-ish. And I was excited about both. And I think what could be interesting with our staff, because our staff is very, you know, gets out there in the public quite a bit, you know, and did fishbowls for us and what have you, and I think it emulates a little bit the fishbowl, except for that was like a listening session. If this were people that maybe didn't even know that much about the topics, like weren't individually invested in it, but just as part of the community and said, hmm, you know, we have these questions we would like to have answered. And at that point, they can actually, in some of these schematics, call in experts to say, here's what we know about, you know, say in that case it was the minimum wage. Also, there's another group where they're just really ideating, you know, they're coming up with ideas for, have we thought about this? Or, you know, these are the concerns, we have a list of five concerns, what different things could meet the concerns of constituents? And to just give us ideas, so that we don't automatically have to go to a solution or a policy. We could say, well, what are the far-reaching aspects of policy that does this, this, and this? And would it be a better overall solution for the city? So I'm just asking, and my motion is for the staff to bring back what they find out there, of which this is kind of the hot new thing. You know, what organizations are there? What different, how do they look different? And what might be useful, and how hard would that be to set up in our schematic in terms of getting feedback?
Councilmember Crist, I'm gonna, so if you can concise that, because currently right now, it says to direct staff to bring back suggestions or information to council regarding, and then dot-dot-dot. So in one sentence, what is it that they will be bringing back to us?
Civic and citizen assembly processes.
Okay.
Based on CML's...
Based on the National League of Cities, NLC's...
Framework?
Yeah, presentations. And I can provide slides, because I went to the training.
Okay. So, then are we ready to... Oh, nope, we have, oh, yeah, Popkin. I see that. It doesn't show up on my little screen, is it? Go ahead, Councilmember Popkin.
Thank you, Mayor Hidalgo Ferreyra. Councilmember Crist, I appreciate the spirit of where you're coming from on this, and maybe the one, there's a, I fully agree with the intent to create more different types of structures for different purposes. And I think what's missing in my head on this right now, at this time, at this specific moment, is just that the purposes aren't fully clear beyond just having more formats. And one of the things that I can share from professional experience is that there are a myriad different ways that you can structure different working sessions and meetings. The best structures are in service of a specific purpose or objective of that function. So like, if, for instance, you want to hear from two groups, maybe that fishbowl structure works well. If you want to break down barriers and get into more brainstorming, it's not going to be a fishbowl structure, it's going to be something else. And so I worry that staff would be coming up with a vocabulary of words, you know, as an analogy here, coming up with a dictionary to address what really we want is, you know, a single page of different options based on the purposes that we have. So I'm not opposed to this, I just wonder if this is the right way to approach it right now. Perhaps at our retreat or in a near-term study session, we could actually brainstorm as a group here, what are the specific formats and purposes we're trying to get at? Perhaps how do we make Coffee with Council more of a brainstorming session? Or how do we create that to be more educational and not just a Q and A? Then we can, then I think it's more fair to ask staff to come back and say, okay, what would be three different ways that we could structure this, based on this objective? That would be my suggestion here. I don't know if that amends your motion constructively at this time, but my suggestion would be that we are crisper with what purposes we're trying to achieve before we actually go task staff with coming up with a litany of different potential ways to run a meeting. If that makes sense.
Okay.
Councilor Popkin, it sounds like you're suggesting that we don't direct staff, we direct council to work on this. Is that what you're saying?
Go ahead, Councilmember Popkin.
Thank you, Mayor Hidalgo Ferreyra, and I realize I don't have a microphone lighting today. I think I might suggest that council discuss this in a near-term study session first, and then figure out what the appropriate direction of staff would be. That would be my suggestion, to still get at the very appropriate intent of your motion tonight, but perhaps putting the cart before the horse.
All right, I feel a little bit out of loss, because we don't have our schedule decided yet.
Would you be willing to pull the motion tonight and then reintroduce it the next, and some, yeah, something that's more directed to, that we're the ones that are ideating and coming together, rather than putting it on staff? So I feel like there could be, it could work, and I like the idea, but how can we, rather than just putting this on staff to come up with ideas, that it's actually coming from us? So at a later time, we can maybe put together a pre-session? So, yeah.
So, let's change the motion to direct council to discuss suggestions and/or information regarding civic and other citizen assembly processes that council could use at a pre-session?
So I would say...
Later at the...
Apologize for interrupting.
At the retreat? I was on a roll, so...
Yeah, I know, I apologize for that. Yeah, or we could just make a motion to create a pre-session and have a pre-session where we can discuss this.
No, I like that.
Let's just do that.
So let's move to create a pre-session to specifically discuss civic and citizen assembly processes, based on the presentations, the NLC presentations.
Okay.
Do you agree, Sean?
Okay, and so we have another one, and then we'll start wrapping that up.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Crist, just a, I guess if it would be considered a friendly amendment, because I would be curious about whether we could expand that pre-session conversation to discuss more general public communication formats in addition to Coffee with Council. Like, if we're going to have the discussion about how we have these kinds of conversations, can we maybe just, in terms of the language we use in the motion, would you consider it friendly to add something like, sorry, let me look at the motion, and additional formats for public engagement? Or something like that? Would you consider that friendly?
I don't think I want to add on to it at this time, Councilor Marcin. I think we should just discuss it at the pre-session.
Okay. So it's, the motion now is rather than to direct staff, but just to actually create a pre-session so that council can discuss and ideate information on civics, civic and citizen assembly processes?
I'll second that.
Okay. Oh, I think we already, oh, did you want to amend it?
Yes, I was amending it, and then I was asking Councilman McCoy, who was the second on this motion, if it was agreeable to him, which it was, yes.
Okay, so then we don't need a second. Thank you, though. Okay, so let's go ahead and vote. See teamwork? Yep. Councilmember Popkin, can you see the voting screen? And, okay. Did you want to do a verbal vote? So the motion has carried unanimously, and let us move on. Does the city manager have a report?
No report, Mayor Council.
Okay, and for special reports and presentation, there are none, so we're moving into first call public invited to be heard. Let's go ahead and start with the first person on the list, which is Jeff Dolman. And you'll have three minutes. Oh, no, that's, oh, okay, I thought somebody was coming down. So I don't see him on the, okay. Joshua Wardell. Oh, go ahead and put your mic on, please.
There we go. Good evening, council. My name is Joshua Wardell. I have lived here in Longmont since 1996. Since that time, I've earned a degree in computer science from Hastings College, subsequently pursuing a career in system administration and IT management to this day. I'm here tonight to address this council and my fellow constituents on the issue that is the Flock cameras that are deployed throughout our city. When we join a social media platform, we must agree to a terms of service contract with the platform before we are allowed to use the website or app. These terms and conditions outline topics such as allowable use of the platform, a list of prohibited materials or topics that may not be discussed, or even the prohibition of the use of their software in the production of nuclear weapons. That's 100% real. Apple started doing that about 10 years ago for iTunes. Many people don't, however, know that these terms and conditions also include language that allows the company providing these services to use any data generated or uploaded by you, the user, for, but not limited to, the training of AI models, the sale of this data to brokerage firms, and even individualized targeted marketing campaigns. This means these companies are making money off you and your data in one way or another. If you are not paying for it, you're not the customer, you're the product being sold. The good news is, those same terms and conditions outline a legally required framework for individuals to retrieve a record of all the data that was collected on them and request that it be deleted. That brings me back to my original topic. For those of you who don't know, Flock Safety is a privately-owned company who specializes in video surveillance, more specifically license plate and vehicle recognition systems, gunshot detection, and speed enforcement cameras. Our city, along with numerous other municipalities across the state, have chosen to sign up for a pilot program with Flock, allowing this company to install their equipment across our cities, in our public spaces, monitoring anyone who comes in or out of our city without their consent. Unlike Facebook or Twitter, I didn't choose to have my data collected by Flock, and I'm pretty sure I didn't sign a terms and conditions acknowledgement for them when I got my driver's license. Flock, and the city for that matter, isn't disclosing what they plan on doing with this data. The only thing that is known is that the use of Flock cameras in partnership with the city of Longmont has been anything but transparent. I'm here tonight to demand that the council terminate their contract with the Flock Group Incorporated on the grounds that we did not consent to it, and consent is sexy. Thank you. Free Palestine.
No clapping, please. Thank you. So next person on the list is Pavel Ivanov? Close enough.
Good evening, council. My name is Pavel Ivanov, 2450 Airport Road, Longmont. I ask the council to stop the use of Flock cameras at the benefit to potential harm with them is just not in his favor. Let me start with a short story. I'm a Russian immigrant and very well know how surveillance can be used against citizens. I worked as a part-time journalist for more than five years in Moscow, and in March 2022, face-recognition cameras installed for safety and security were used to find where I live and help unlawfully detain me as I worked for political opposition media at the time. My friend was found through them, and I've been assaulted, numerous others, too, and not only by government officials, but also by access-biased citizens. Officially, they're installed to find criminals; in reality, they're used in many more ways than that. Now, cameras, of course, are tools, and if we can think of it as a normal drill with numerous bits, Phillips, Flathead, Torx, whatever, you can have one bit inserted, let's say, an AI model that detects cars, license plates to find stolen vehicles or criminals on the run, or you can have another bit, a model that will detect people's faces, manner of walking, clothes, politically affiliated stickers, et cetera, et cetera. Now, what can be done with all this data? Well, for example, you can have a political party in charge persecute their opponents or religious activists. There have been a lot, there have been information about a search in Texas about the police officer looking for somebody who did an abortion. You can also have big data leaks, just like with numerous previous data leaks associated with both governments and private companies, and then can be used by private parties to harass or otherwise harm other members of the community. What's more important is that Flock may say all they want about license plates and cars, but their own file entails a very different picture. A U.S. patent granted to Flock Group, Inc. in August 2022 reveals the company has developed a patent and technology to identify and classify people based on race, gender, and other physical characteristics. Patent 11416545B1 describes a system that goes beyond vehicle identification to analyze human subjects captured in surveillance footage. And let's speak about the Washington Judges Rule on Freedom of Information Act. They said that Flock's camera are paid by tax money, so the data should be accessible to regular citizens, the public. Could be the news being anyone with their own drill bits to surveil their business, political, and personal opponents, maybe harass someone. The very few criminals that these cameras will maybe help catch is just nothing compared to valid privacy concerns and normalization of mass AI video surveillance. We also know the police is not in the best behavior in other cities, and it's just unlikely for Longmont to be uniquely different with that. For example, in Houston, an article says, "A lot of searches also just listed gibberish like SDF, that's the sequence of letters in the center of your computer keyboard," or just said that they were there for random checks. There was also one found that just said "donut." Thank you very much. Is it...
It is time, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next individual on the list is Aisha Namari.
Hi, my name is Aisha Namari. I am a longtime resident of the city of Longmont. I am here because I'm very concerned about the city's partnership with Flock Safety. While on paper, the benefits of a national network of license plate readers for stolen cars and Amber alerts is unobjectionable, in practice, this is not what Flock does. Rather, they are using their technology to create a national database of everyone's comings and goings. This is using their AI-powered cameras, which, like was said earlier, can be changed, the AI model can be changed. This is a gross invasion of our privacy. In this country, the government should not be tracking us unless it has individualized suspicion that we are engaged in wrongdoing. While the Longmont Police Department may be using Flock very, in a way that is transparent, being part of a national network means that our data is being accessed by anyone who's part of this network. It may be used in ways that are outlawed or would never be approved in the city of Longmont. This is not a hypothetical situation. In Texas, deputies used Flock's national network to track a woman who they suspected had an abortion. This is Texas police tracking people outside of Texas without a warrant for a law that is specific to Texas. The ubiquity of Flock cameras and the access to data without the requirement of a warrant also presents constitutional questions. The Supreme Court has explained that individuals have a reasonable expectation of privacy in the whole of their physical movements, because of the privacies of life that those movements can reveal. In United States versus Jones, a majority of the court wrote that using a GPS tracker to follow a car's movement for 28 days constitutes a Fourth Amendment search, observing that the ability to secretly monitor and catalog every single movement of an individual's car for a very long period raised serious concerns. So it can be argued, and likely will be argued, in court that the police departments using Flock are engaging in unlawful search. Finally, Senate Bill, Colorado Senate Bill 25-276 passed earlier this year in May, provides fines for up to $50,000 for each violation of data privacy. provides fines for up to $50,000 for each violation of data privacy by local governments or agencies. The use of Flock cameras could result in numerous violations. As a resident, I would rather my tax dollars be used to make life better than paying fines for eroding my and other residents' privacy. Based on all of this, the city council should work to cancel the city's Flock contract. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next individual, Jason Kent. Yeah, you know, I'm wondering if it's too off to the side, so... Yes.
Hello. My name is Jason.
Go ahead.
I'm here tonight to urge you not to renew Longmont's contract with Flock Safety and to demand the removal of their infrastructure from our community. Flock markets itself as a public safety service, but the reality is far more troubling. This is a company whose business model is built on mass data collection, and their track record for keeping that sensitive data secure is extremely poor. Lawmakers have called for federal investigations into Flock's security practices, and for good reason. Their systems are deeply compromised. Security researchers recently discovered that Flock devices can be physically manipulated to gain access, allowing data to be intercepted or to install malware. This is possible in part because their hardware runs an exceptionally outdated version of the Android operating system, which is used on phones, which stopped receiving security updates over four years ago. Worse, users of the system are not even required to use two-factor authentication, which makes account sharing or theft trivial and less secure than your personal Facebook account. In fact, Flock user credentials have already appeared on the dark web. Data breaches are not new, but now instead of exposing your credit card number, we risk leaking our detailed location history for the last 30 or more days. Researchers also discovered Flock apps exposed on the public internet that contain sensitive law enforcement data, including live patrol car locations, and also exposed were API keys which could allow directly querying Flock servers for even more information. Vulnerabilities aside, Flock is fundamentally a data broker disguised as a public safety company. I cannot enforce that enough. Data brokers collect, aggregate, and sell information about people, often without their knowledge or consent. This is the business model that Google and Facebook thrive on. Flock systems don't capture just license plates. As we heard, they can identify vehicles by various visual details like make, model, color, vehicle damage, even sticker placement. The system also includes audio recording capabilities and AI-powered software capable of facial recognition. As we heard, they filed patents for technology that can identify a person by age, ethnicity, gender, height, weight, clothing details, and even a person's gait and posture. Recently, they partnered with Ring to allow data sharing from millions of home cameras nationwide in the Flock system. Just the other day, Ring also announced their own facial recognition capabilities. This is not public safety, this is mass surveillance infrastructure. Longmont would not be alone in rejecting this technology. Over a dozen cities in eight states have decided against renewing Flock contracts. Right here in Colorado, the city of Denver recently voted unanimously, the city council, to reject this system, though they were later subverted by Mayor Mike Johnston. These communities recognize that the risks far outweigh any promised benefits.
Thank you. Margaret Klein.
Hello. My name's Margaret Klein. Tonight, we got to hear the mayor and city council members swear to uphold the Constitution. I'm speaking tonight in an act of support for preserving my and my neighbor's Fourth Amendment constitutional right to reasonable privacy. I'm asking you to please consider the harmful consequences Flock cameras can have. Do not renew the city's contract with Flock, and please remove the cameras that are currently installed. I've lived in Boulder County for almost a decade. I'm a mental health provider for clients who hold various marginalized identities. I've witnessed my clients' very realistic worries about being surveilled and targeted for abuse, especially so over the past year. Flock systems will disproportionately affect marginalized communities, especially folks who do not have legal citizenship. Many Longmont residents don't and might be afraid to speak out. There have already been examples of Flock data being shared with immigration agencies. In one example, a Loveland police officer was found to be sharing his login credentials with a federal immigration agent. Flock is the first private company to create a nationwide mass surveillance system out of its customers' cameras. Flock cameras are not speed cameras, toll collection cameras, or simple license plate checks against stolen vehicles or Amber alerts. Flock's network can track the movements of all residents, not just those suspected of committing crimes. Law enforcement nationwide is using this system, which stores information in a privately-owned database to track the locations and movements of countless law-abiding people who have never been suspected of any crime. The data is ultimately owned by Flock and will be shared with whomever they wish. This database has known security flaws, and federal agencies can always subpoena Flock. Why do we even have these cameras? For public safety, I will highlight that we already have many citywide community crime cameras all across Longmont. The data from these cameras is accessible only by city officials, and they have control over how and where the data is stored and shared. On the contrary, Flock's data is owned and stored by them, and ultimately will be shared with whomever allows them to profit the most. Flock is now using AI to analyze our driving patterns to determine if we're suspicious. That means law enforcement resources may be wasted by targeting you just because an algorithm decided your movement patterns suggest criminality. And when this results in inevitable lawsuits against cases of false accusations and police overreach because of this technology, taxpayers like ourselves will still foot the bill. There's no reason at all we should have technology creating comprehensive records of everybody's movements and keeping them for about 30 days. Flock is selling surveillance technology that preys on our privacy and infringes on our Fourth Amendment constitutional right to privacy. Our data is valuable to them, and our tax dollars are funding these tech billionaires. Please do not renew the city's contract and remove the Flock cameras. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect timing. Like that, okay. Next on the list, Shaquille Delal.
Shaquille Delal, 219 Francis Street. Flock Safety's network of license plate readers in Longmont is a privacy problem dressed up as public safety. The cameras capture persistent location stamped records of every vehicle that passes, creating a searchable trail that can be shared across jurisdictions, a surveillance capability that privacy advocates like the ACLU, the Electronic Frontier Foundation, and Senator Ron Wyden already warn as being actively abused. Concrete examples show why Colorado communities should worry. Denver's Flock contract has provoked intense public backlash over data sharing, transparency, and federal access concerns, and Boulder recently cut federal access after privacy risks were flagged, but that does not prevent the federal government from accessing this data anyway through other jurisdictions. Importantly, Flock cameras do not measure speed and cannot issue speeding tickets. They are automatic plate readers and video capture systems, not speed enforcement devices. Yet their installation creates the appearance of traffic enforcement while producing voluminous location data about residents. That illusion undermines our Vision Zero approach, which prioritizes engineering, traffic calming, and equitable policies over surveillance-heavy enforcement that distracts from redesigning streets and actually slows cars to save lives. Furthermore, the rights that this country guarantees are premised on a reasonable guarantee of privacy for average people. Whether that right is against unlawful search, the right to not be detained just because I'm an immigrant despite being a U.S. citizen, or the right to reproductive healthcare. Longmont should cancel its contract with Flock and refuse to renew it. Flock and its business model represent just one more way in which predatory corporations extract information which is of value to them while providing no or dubious value to the people whose data has been harvested. Longmont's government should serve us. It should not be providing dragnet resources to unaccountable corporations or lawless kidnappers.
Thank you. Ryan Forbes.
Ryan Forbes, 2220 Water Song Circle. Tonight, I wanted to talk about symbols and the power they have. A lot of people who've come up to speak tonight, a lot of people in this room right now, are supporting them because they represent the communities that they are a part of. A lot of people use symbols because they're very easy to identify. They come quickly to mind. Right above your head, there's a beautiful symbol of the city of Longmont right here. And one of the easiest-to-identify symbol of any community is their flag. There's the flag of our country, there's the flag of our state, and then there's also the flag of our city. And if you know, which you can ask everyone in this room, do you know what the city of Longmont flag looks like? And not many people, when I've talked to about this subject, know that they even have a flag. And bonus question, if I gave you a piece of paper right now, could you draw it? And I couldn't. And I've seen it a bunch of times. And the challenge is because the power of a symbol like a flag is it has to have a lot of meaning, it has to... There's books on vexillology where it talks about the importance of a flag is that it has to be easy enough that a child can remember it and draw it freehand. It can be seen on the size of a postage stamp because that is usually how most people see it. It can either be seen horizontally and lying down, and it will have the same meaning. Also, it won't incorporate letters, unfortunately, like the Longmont flag has right now. And so here would be my ask. There is an Arts in Public Places Commission, and we have a tremendous amount of talented artists in this community. Let's put it... Let's get that commission to put a call out to the artists in the community to design flags, and then put it up to the commission to find a new flag for... to be voted on. And to get it up there, that follows those quick... Those rules I just described right here. And make it easy, identifiable, and let everyone... So that everyone can have a flag that they know, they recognize, and that they can sport on their hats, on buttons, on shirts, wherever, so they can say, "Hey, I'm a proud Longmonster." Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Herbert.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and honorable councilmembers. Thank you so much for having this... Making time for us to come and speak to you this evening. I am Nancy Herbert, and I am the Executive Director of Safe Shelter of St. Frain Valley. For those of you that are not familiar with the organization, we are a... We have been in Longmont for 47 years, and we provide 24/7 support to domestic violence survivors and also those that are victims of elder abuse and work and sex trafficking. We work very closely with all of the departments within the city of Longmont, and we are proud to say that we have some wonderful partnerships with all of you and with the city, and with many other nonprofits here in the community. I especially want to thank you for your long-term support of our agency and your recent renewed support for funding for next year, which really, really, as you know, is very well needed by the nonprofits because it's been quite a year for us. What I wanted to do was to introduce you to a program that we have started called Connect. And I believe, Jake, you have... You've been one of our guests for Connect. It's a luncheon, and it's an informational session which tells you about the leadership and the history of our organization. It gives you a walk-around tour of the organization and also a specialized tour of the shelter. I invite each of the board members, and you, Madam Mayor, to come and join us for this. I'm going to leave you flyers. We don't have dates set yet for January and onward for when we're going to have these dates, but if you are interested, please let us know. The contact number is here on the flyer. And we also invite all of the leaders of the city departments to come and join as well. It's very important. We've already had a lot of police, all of the commanders and the chief have been to visit us and do this. Many other cities now are coming and bringing their leadership teams to us because we do serve their areas, and they want to learn more about us. So I just wanted to give you an open invitation. Congratulations on all of you that are new in your seats. We welcome you, and congratulations, Madam Mayor. We really appreciate this, all of the time that you're going to be dedicating, more time, to the city. And as a former city councilwoman, I really appreciate the time that you put in every day for all of your constituents. So thank you, and we hope to see you at our organization. And Harold, if it's okay if I just hand this off to you? Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Lance Whitaker.
Evening, Mayor. Susie Hidaldo-Faring. Welcome. My name is Lance Whitaker, 1750 Collier Street, Longmont, Colorado. Been a resident of Longmont for over 45 years now, I guess. I'd like to mention today is National Trickshot Day, and seeing as how I can't hit the wastebasket with a piece of paper, don't look at me for one of those. Today is also National Giving Day, and seeing as how you'd be giving a lot of your time, thank you. National Fritters Day, as Sean McCoy knows. National Mutt Day, and now everybody should go down, and if you don't have a dog, go ahead and go down to the National Shelters and pick up yourself a mutt day. It is also National Special Education Day, and I thought all education was special, but apparently not. It is also a special shout-out to Brittany Spears today. Today is her birthday. Thank you, Brittany, for giving us your birthday. And that'll be it. Thank you all, and I hope to see you soon.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, John Limkey.
John Limkey, 744 Stonebridge Drive. I picked the wrong person to follow, apparently, Lance. Thanks, that was amazing. Man, I'm here to speak against the use of Flock cameras. I understand the value of having cameras for the police force. London at one time was the most watched city in the entire world. They use their cameras to catch the assassins that killed former KGB agent Alexander... I'm not even going to pronounce his last name, but he was assassinated by agents of Russia. The Flock system... Oh, however, as citizens, we have a right to privacy. The Flock system has the capability for any law enforcement officer in the entire country to monitor all the citizens of Longmont without warrant or any oversight, and I think that's unacceptable. Second, Flock as a company is operating fast and loose. I learned from a former coworker that you can easily hack them and get something called root access, which is beyond admin privileges. It's complete control of the system because it's not secure. We should not be engaging with a security company that can't secure its own systems. Third, it has already been used to go after an innocent person in Colorado just because they happened to be caught on a camera in the same place that a crime had happened, and she had to prove her innocence using the cameras on her car that showed that she was not the person that committed the crime. I urge you to remove the Flock cameras in the city and terminate our contract. I personally wouldn't trust a company that has misled its customers and has failed to implement security measures on its own equipment. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was the last person on the list. So we're going to go ahead and move on to the consent agenda, and I will formally close Public Invited to Be Heard. Crystal, can you please read this consent agenda for the record?
Yes. The second reading and public hearing for all ordinances introduced on this consent agenda will be held on December 16, 2025. Item 15A is Ordinance 2025-81, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2025. Item 15B is Ordinance 2025-82, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter 4.08 of the Longmont Municipal Code regarding eligibility for income-verified city programs. Item 15C is Ordinance 2025-83, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapters 15.02, 15.03, and 15.04 of the Longmont Municipal Code regarding accessory dwelling units. Item 15D is Resolution 2025-77, a resolution of the Longmont City Council... Item 15D is Resolution 2025-77, a resolution of the Longmont City Council calling a special municipal election to be held Tuesday, March 3rd, 2026, to fill a vacancy in the office of the City Council member for Ward 3. Item 15E is Resolution 2025-78, a resolution of the Longmont City Council authorizing and supporting the application for a grant from the Colorado Department of Local Affairs for the first and main transit center. Item 15F is Appointment of Longmont Tourist and Improvement District Director.
Does anyone have any items to remove? Let's go to, oh, we have a couple. Councilmember Mars.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull C and D.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, C. Shows up as Shakita, so Councilmember Prieto.
I would like to pull B.
Okay. Okay, so I, is there anyone who can move the consent agenda minus B, C, and D?
Still moved?
Okay, so the consent agenda has been moved by Councilmember Chris, seconded by Councilmember McCoy, minus items B, C, and D. So any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Okay, and that looks to carry unanimously. Let's go ahead, and we have no items, ordinances on second reading and public hearings on any matter, so therefore we will move forward to the items removed from the consent agenda. And we'll start with item B. And that was Councilmember Prieto.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just had some questions for staff regarding specifically the CARES program.
Good evening, Mayor Hidalgo-Faring, Councilmember Prieto. I am Becky Doyle, Chief Strategic Integration Officer. I'm happy to answer questions you have, or if you all would like kind of an introduction to what we're doing generally, I do have some slides that I could share.
So I think it would be beneficial for new council members to see the slides, and then, yeah, so let's go ahead and go with that. Councilmember Popkin, can you hold off until after the slides? Okay, you're in the queue.
All right, now, now to see if I can figure out how to share what I am doing here. This might be a, this is Dallas question. All right, I'm glad I called for help. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're really excited to share some of these updates with, around the Longmont CARES program and associated technologies with you this evening. Back in July, we came with kind of a, a problem that we had recognized as well as a proposed solution. We recognized that we had a number of income-qualified programs throughout the city, and that is making a weird flag, okay. And that they all had, you know, potentially different ways to qualify, different income levels that qualified you for those programs, and, you know, just not a lot of consistency between those programs across the city. Additionally, there were some barriers to folks participating in some of those programs that we wanted to remove. And so these were the four programs, four program areas that we really talked about. There's Longmont CARES, which we'll talk more about, Nextlight Internet Assistance Program, which provides discounted fiber internet to folks, recreation programs, mostly scholarships for, for families with, with children, and then different housing programs. So housing programs have the most restrictive income qualification process because they must follow the HUD Part 5 income qualification process. And so what we talked with council about was adding a direct income qualification pathway for all of those other programs that follows that HUD Part 5, like introductory process that, so, you know, if you start sort of to, to be qualified for a housing program that coincidentally you would become qualified for every other income-qualified program within the city. At the same time, we want to preserve the cross-qualification that we started with. Something is happening.
We just lost everything.
We aren't getting presentation food on this screen. We're on that TV.
We're going to pause. No.
Is it up now? Would this be a good opportunity for a break? Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break.
Cool.
Okay. So, let's go ahead and return to our presentation. So, everything's set, right?
We sure hope so.
Okay, very good.
Thanks so much for your patience. Okay, so to re-ground us in where we were. You know, the Longmont Cares Program specifically has historically used a cross-qualification process where applicants just show that they are qualified for any other means-tested program that's, you know, kind of at the level of LEAP or below. And that's what we have used to qualify them. We are now adding this direct income qualification method where if you provide, you know, substantiate your income as being at or below 50% of area median income, which is the same as all the housing requirements, then you would qualify for all the city programs. So, that's what the ordinance does that we have brought to you tonight is just add that language that will allow us to use that direct income information. As a reminder, the Longmont Cares rebates at this point include a rebate of grocery tax that, or an amount roughly similar to the grocery tax paid by a household in a prior year, property tax, or the amount of rent that's roughly equivalent to property tax paid for renters in the prior year, as well as a portion of pretty much everything that appears on your utility bill. So, it's a very comprehensive rebate program and is, you know, we're proud to be able to offer that to assist households and do want to reiterate that this is not meant to be emergency assistance, but rather, you know, we have this rebate that we are able to make available to households. So, the other thing is that by qualifying for these rebates, you are also able to be referred to other programs. So, there are a lot of other benefits available. People can choose to be referred into like different housing programs, efficiency and sustainability programs. We were able to do an air conditioner giveaway this summer to folks who are qualified for the program, you know, discounted garden in a box. So, this has been a really great resource for us. You know, during the pandemic, we provided additional benefits to folks who were part of the program as well. So, that's just something to know is that, you know, we're constantly looking at ways to reach out to this group. Okay, so now I'm going to say some technical stuff, but it's exciting. So, you may know that we have been working on a couple of different Salesforce implementations. The one that we are live on currently, we refer to as CareNet, and that is really taking these four service areas and, you know, figuring out how we can work together better as a city to serve residents that use, you know, potentially many of these service areas in a way that, you know, so that we can safely share information internally. So, this has been a great success, and people have really appreciated the new capabilities that are available to them through this. So, we are now, so this is, here's a picture. So, in a privacy-informed way, you know, we have community members that are then connected to those services. So, you know, I talked about kind of the four areas. We're also moving lead into this area. So, this is live today. Right now, we are working on including all those income-qualified programs that I talked about. So, what this will do is a few things, is it'll smooth that referral process that I talked about so that, you know, as people come into this program, we can easily refer them to other resources and make sure that they're aware of all the things that are available to them. We'll be able to automate reminders to reapply next year, a lot of really great stuff that's happening with that. And then in the long term, we know that we have some additional pieces that we want to add to that CareNet area, including, you know, people being able to identify authorized friends and family members that are part of their caring community and potentially safe data sharing with community partners as we are able to negotiate data sharing agreements. So, that is all a thing that is happening. So, now we're just trying to name this new program, which is so much more than it has been. So, here's some ideas about what the thing might be called. So, if you want to throw out a name, I'm here for it. But essentially, the ordinance that is before you tonight is really just authorizing that additional qualification pathway and then increasing the electric rebate by $10 per month, which is something that we discussed during the rate increase discussion for electric. So, that's all I have for you.
So, I'm going to call Councilmember Popkin. Did you still want to comment or do you have a question?
I did, thank you. And thank you, Becky, for that presentation. I think that was really clarifying and a good refresher for myself as well. I just wanted to briefly clarify per our email correspondence earlier and the comment you just made. Where in the, so where in the ordinance does it talk about the increase specifically? Because I was asking you whether, like, what it's tied to and the $10 there, and I just don't, I didn't see that in the text, and I just wanted to.
Yeah, so in the, so the qualification pathway text is sort of like a paragraph on the first page. As you scroll through that, there's a table that has sort of like the old values for the electric rebate, which it was like a three-year increasing amount, and now there's a new value for the electric rebate that has replaced the, it's in there for 2026.
Oh, so the new value of 3075 versus 2075 is what you're talking about.
Correct, yeah, exactly.
Okay, so then my question was actually like, if we look to the rebate on grocery tax, for instance, we talked about how the rebate was automatically adjusted for the consumer price index. Is there an equivalent for the electric?
There's not currently at the moment where we're legislatively adopting the increases in the, in that rebate, sort of like as we are talking about rate increases. I think that that is what we are doing with all of the utility rebate amounts because the, you know, it's so much of that is dependent on what, you know, what rates are in effect as opposed to, you know, the consumer spending, which roughly moves with CPI.
I see, so you're saying because annually we adjust rates or we consider adjusting rates, that's why this is a single-year adjustment right now?
Correct.
Okay, thank you for that clarity, I appreciate it.
Okay, Councilmember Prieto.
Thank you so much. I just have two questions. Can you clarify the current average Cares application processing time and whether that may increase with the new expanded eligibility?
That's a really good question. Right now, we let customers know that it may take up to 90 days to process their rebate application. In reality, it takes usually more like 60, but, you know, we want to make sure that if, in case there's an issue getting the documents or anything that we need to do that, we have a little time there. So, we have estimated that, you know, with this additional eligibility pathway, we expect probably an additional 200 applications each year. We had been averaging, you know, around 1,100, 1,200 applications annually. We've dropped down recently closer to 800. Now, we expect probably like 850 to close this year out. And so, that additional 200 will really put us back in the range of where we were, sort of in the height of the pandemic. And we think that the technology upgrades that we're making with Salesforce are actually going to shorten the processing time so that we should see, you know, a shorter processing time instead of additional time with those additional households.
Thank you so much. And then just one more question. Can you confirm if we currently avoid or put a hold on disconnecting households once they have submitted a Cares application?
So, we do try, but I will say again, you know, this is a problem of like we have different technology systems that don't necessarily talk to one another. If it helps at all, there will be a brief pause during system upgrades on disconnections. So, while this is coming into place. So, we are continually working on, you know, how can we better connect those things of making sure that we're giving people two resources before they reach that disconnection status? And, you know, one of the easiest things to do is just call and chat with our CSRs as people are noticing that they're in that, in that state.
Awesome, thank you so much, Becky, and thank you for the work that you guys are doing to really expand eligibility for households. It makes a huge difference in our city. With that being said, I do want to make a motion to direct staff to bring back an ordinance updating our utility disconnection procedures, probably sometime during first quarter to ensure that once a complete Cares application is received, the applicant is temporarily.
So, is this in addition to this ordinance or are you passing the ordinance? We have to, we have an open item and then, so next week, when we have staff direction, you could do that then, okay?
Perfect.
So, before we go forward though on this item, Councilmember Crist.
Thank you, Ms. Doyle. We had at one time talked about adding in business owners into the Cares program, and I'm just checking in with you to see where you are with that process.
We have not come up with a method to qualify businesses as, you know, under this. We do have within the existing language, affordable housing operators are considered to be part of this program because they are serving the, you know, the population that we also serve with this program. So, maybe this would be a good brainstorming sort of activity for your civic engagement.
Exactly, I like that we're thinking alike. Well, okay, so to be determined in the future. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And with that, I will move Ordinance 2025-82.
Councilmember Prieto, would you like to second, since you pulled the item?
Yes, I second.
Okay, very good. So, the item, Ordinance 2025-82, was moved by Councilmember Crist and seconded by Councilmember Prieto. Can we have a vote?
Councilmember Crist?
Yeah, she just sent it, yes. Okay, and that carries unanimously. And then the next item is Item C that was pulled, and that was pulled by Councilmember Marcin, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, just quick questions for staff, and this is really more generally related to kind of some process that I've heard from residents and just clarification for the public. So, in regards to our public-facing ADU guidelines, it's my understanding that those have not been updated since 2018. I am curious about why and just additionally wondering if the passage of this ordinance makes it more likely that there are substantive enough changes for that to be a thing that's necessary, if that makes sense, within the ordinance. Thanks, Don. I'm Jake, by the way.
Thank you, Don Burchett, Planning and Development Services, Mayor and Council. I caught most of what you're saying while we were getting that up, apologize. I think the primary information that I took away is that there's still older information for the ADUs on our website. We do have right now the new application form and other documents, but they are not linked on that actual page. They got put under a permit application instead. So, thank you for identifying that that's not where it should be, and then also that that page is out of date, that it needs to be updated. So, we will be making changes to that. And now, based on the changes that we'll need the council to adopt to get the final approvals from the state, we'll need to modify a couple of those documents anyway and get those revised again, but we'll get that taken care of right away.
Sorry, Mayor, I turned myself off.
Oh, okay.
And that was kind of the secondary question, is the substantive changes that get made here necessitate the additional update anyway, so we're going to make that change no matter what. Okay.
You're exactly correct.
Thank you, Don, I appreciate that.
Yes, of course.
Okay, Councilmember Popkin.
Thank you, Mayor. Don, thanks for the clarification on that first question. I shared that one as well. I, excuse me, I was just curious about the architectural design standards update piece of this or the compliance aspect of that. I understand why the state had comments here. I'm just curious where in the ordinance, or maybe it was updated in the text somewhere else, but I didn't see what those specific compliance updates were. Could you just shed more light on that for us?
Of course. So, the state identified two items, and I'm kind of scrolling through what's a red line version of the code, which we can add to your packet for the next meeting so everybody can take a look at this. But the state in general identified two items that they requested us to revise. The first was related to setbacks, and apologize while I'm trying to scroll and talk at the same time here. The setback issue, which if I can find it on my red line here, they argued that the state legislature, when they passed the regulations for the ADUs, stated that even an accessory dwelling unit that is attached to the existing structure should be allowed to be built within five foot of a rear setback or rear property line. So, the setback for a attached accessory dwelling unit to an existing house, that that setback would have to be five foot to the rear. And so, the first change, which I have up on the screen right now, is striking that they had to comply originally with the setbacks for the principal structure. And instead now, they will have the, a separate setback, which is five for the side, which is the current setback for any residential home. They will have a five-foot rear setback now, where before it would have been 15 to 20, depending on the zoning district. And then the front yard setback is the same. So, that's the first change. And then the other red lines that you'll see related to that are referencing those setback standards under each of the zoning districts. So, every zoning district has a little guide for what your setbacks are, how big your lot is. That will be updated to reference so that there is no confusion that that setback applies to every one of these zoning districts where an ADU could be built. So, that's the first change. The second change that the state asked us to make was regarding the design standards for the accessory dwelling units. And their concern was that the statement, which is Item Three, Oops, Item Three here on this page, was that it had to be architecturally compatible with the existing principal structure. And in here, we noted some of the items that would make up compatibility. And so, instead of arguing with them, we've agreed to strike that. We already have standards. For example, we had mentioned roofs as one item that was compatible, but we have a standard below that was okay, that all pitched roofs shall have eaves that match the principal structure and design, location, and depth. So, we still have specific criteria that are measurable that the state didn't have any concern with. They just had concern with Item Three. So, we're striking that and we're reserving that space so we don't have to renumber the rest of those. That's why it's reserved, just so that we don't have to renumber.
Thank you. So, basically, we're cutting out that architectural compatibility that the state thought was subjective.
Correct.
We are referencing existing, or we're keeping in existing standards that are considered objective.
Correct.
And then just the reserve. Okay, thank you. I think you've cleared it up on my end. Appreciate it.
Great.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Crist.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mayor. Mr. Burchett, how many ADU requests have we had since we changed this, which was almost a year ago, I guess?
So, the regulations went into effect in June of this year, and since June, we have issued six permits. We have some others that are in the process right now. Our average was a little less than one per month. Based on the six that we've issued, we've issued just over one per month. So, if you look at a short little window, our numbers are up a little bit, which is, I think, what the state was after.
Yeah, well, that's helpful. When I was in a presentation at the CML conference in Breckenridge, we were talking about ADUs, and the conversation really centered more around Boulder, that an ADU costs about $500,000, which just isn't attainable or affordable for Longmont. And I wondered, how much of that is infrastructure? Do they have to come up with more water taps or do they have to be attached? In other words, you know, actually physically attached? Or do they have to be attached, in other words, you know, actually physically attached to the house to avoid that extra cost?
So in Longmont, we do not require an additional water tap or an additional sewer tap. You are allowed to use your existing water and sewer tap on the primary home.
Okay.
So from that standpoint, there is not the cost of buying another water sewer tap. So, um, I know that Loveland, for example, my wife works up there, they have a requirement where they have to pay additional water fees, and, and that adds to the cost. So from that standpoint, I think we have a pretty good, uh, policy setup, I think, that keeps our costs as low as possible. But construction cost, material costs still push those up quite a bit to, you know, you can look at about two hundred to two hundred and fifty dollars a square foot for an accessory dwelling unit, and at eight hundred square feet, that adds up to a significant amount for some people that it's still tough to build stick-built, which is why we've had interest in people bringing in, uh, modulars as options, you know, putting them on a, a foundation, still connecting them just as you would a, a stick-built, um, into the community, and there's interest in that.
So the discussion was around using standardized plans, but they were still very expensive. And, and I'm just wondering if there's any, like, what you, would you recommend going forward to, to take down the cost even more? If you, if you're not gonna buy modular and you, you want it to be compatible with the home, how do you? How do you contain the cost?
Well, I'm, I know that, um, the state itself, with us being, we're trying to become a jurisdiction that's certified by the state for ADUs, which allows us to ask for some of the funds that are being set aside in the budgets of the state that we can use to try to reduce costs. One of the items that we started a numbers, a number of years ago before COVID, but then I kind of got put off to the side, was the city had, um, hired an architect to design a number of, uh, models for, of ADUs of different types, uh, single-story, um, units with garages, units above garages. And the goal was that we were going to try to figure out a way to encourage people to make those affordable, and then some kind of an agreement. And if you signed up for that, we would give you a plan set that then you could use to build. It would be already approved. It'd be a stock plan that the city would have approved. You would then have to just pay your fees, and you would get a building permit to be able to construct this. And then you'd be able to go out and find someone to, to build it for you. We felt that that was a, a pretty, at that time, anyway, uh, prior to two thousand, or, yeah, to, uh, twenty twenty, what we thought was a significant reduction by not having to go out and pay for an architectural firm to design plans. And, um, we are trying to revise that right now. Uh, the Housing Group is working to try to get those brought up to the current building codes, and is looking at trying to figure out a way that they can offer those up for residents to be able to use, to be able to construct, um, accessory dwelling units. So that's one way. Again, working with the state on trying to figure out other ways to help get monies that can go towards some of the other permit fees that we charge, that, you know, um, go towards general fund to help provide other services. We need to make sure we're collecting those, um, but there might be ways to backfill some of the, that money. So the housing folks are also looking into that, to try to make progress to reduce.
I believe we got a grant to update the, we received a dollar grant to update the standards, so we're working on that now. And the important piece of really being in compliance and getting this certification is this is what makes us eligible for the state funds to then try to buy the cost out with those funds. And so that's, um, if you, if you don't come into compliance, you're not eligible for the state funding mechanisms.
Right, right, okay. Well, well done. Actually, we're making progress in the right direction.
I think so.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve, um, this item?
Uh, yes, I will move ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eighty-three.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, so, go back to my, sorry. Get myself back to the screen. So councilmember Christ had moved, uh, consent agenda item B. Trying to get out of this screen here, so much stuff. Uh, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eighty-three, and it was seconded by councilmember Marcin. Can I have a vote, please? Okay, and that carries unanimously. Now on to item D, and that was also, um, pulled by councilmember Marcin.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, hi, Don. So just for public, uh, understanding and informational items, this is a big choice that the, you know, we make as a council to decide on a special election to fill a vacancy here. Can you talk to us a little bit just about the, the details of how this date was decided upon, communications with the county clerk, et cetera, and why this date was the one that we're looking at for the special election? And the date of March third, specifically?
Thank you, councilmember, um, Marcin, and Mayor Idago Ferring. Welcome all to the dais. First time presenting to you all as this council. Um, yeah, once we realized we had a fifty percent chance of, uh, a vacancy in that mayoral contest, if, if either of the seated councilmembers won, we began conversations and alerted the county that we knew we would probably, or there was a decent chance we were going to need, um, a special election, and then, uh, once we saw the results, then we, uh, began those conversations in earnest. And, um, basically, the dates, um, there are a lot of bumpers, I call them, around elections. There are primary elections to consider that the county has to administer. This election doesn't, didn't officially wrap up until last week, when results were official and final. So when you put all of those, uh, regulations and dates into a bucket and calculate all that out, you end, you land somewhere in between end of February, first part of March, somewhere in there. So we began our conversation there. How, what about February twenty-eighth, March third, March tenth? What's gonna work best? Um, and then we also looked at the candidate nomination period, which is, um, by statute, ninety-one to seventy-one days before the election. Today is the ninety-first day before the election, if it's on March third. And also the county, March tenth, um, as a clerk, our favorite was March tenth, just to push that back a little bit, give candidates a little more time around the holidays. The county wasn't, that wasn't a favorable date for them. So we pushed back, looked at March third, looked at the nomination period, and said, can we make that work? Anything earlier, we couldn't make it work, because we couldn't get you to call an election prior to that. So March third is where we landed, and it works for the county, so yay.
Yay. And do we have any, uh, further estimate on cost or anything at this point in time, since the council con went out?
No idea what cost might be, but it will all be borne by us. We will pay the full cost of this election. It's just a ward election, so it wouldn't be the... I, I don't have any idea what it might cost, but I, I fully expect we can cover it in our budget.
And just for, for public clarification, that, that budget process is part of the annual budget process for the clerk to factor in for elections.
Annual budget, yep.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Great, thank you. Would you like to put your mic back on, so you can move the item?
Sure.
Uh, if nobody else has anything on this, I will move resolution, uh, twenty-two, uh, twenty twenty-five seventy-seven.
Very good. So, um, the item was moved by councilmember Marcin and seconded by councilmember McCoy. Can we have a vote, please? Okay, and that carries unanimously, and I guess don't go anywhere. We're going, we're moving on to general business, so stay there. And we are now on to the election of mayor pro tem by secret ballot.
Mayor Idago Ferring and councilmembers, this is, uh, your process to nominate and vote on your, uh, mayor pro tem for the next two years. You each have, um, three ballots at your dais, um, and you will, after nominations are considered, um, then we will vote on your nominations. I note that councilmember Popkin's camera's not on.
Are you present?
Okay, he's present. Just wanna make sure. We've gotta all be present, so I wanna make sure we're all present for this, uh, portion. And, uh, councilmember Popkin will vote verbally to me directly via phone, since he can't have a paper and we don't get to collect his phone. So, um, that's why I have my cellphone here, which normally would be inappropriate. But up, it's on to you all.
Great, so I'm gonna go ahead and throw it out there. Are there any councilmembers who would like to nominate? Okay, so we'll start with councilmember Marcin.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to take this opportunity to nominate councilmember McCoy to be the next mayor in pro tem of the city of Longmont. As someone who is, uh, a fellow native, I think he brings a real heart to this work, and I think as we think about the future of our community, someone who has the kind of breadth of experience and the real care for this community, and, and I think, um, will do a, an outstanding job. So it's, uh, I'm, I'm pleased to nominate councilmember McCoy.
Do we have a second?
I have a second, then.
Okay, so, um, and he accepts, okay, so we don't have to vote on accepting or just, no, we don't.
You do need to vote by secret ballot.
We do, yes, but to accept, so he's accepted the nomination, so we, are there, is there anyone else?
Are there any other nominations?
Are there any other nominations? No, okay, so we'll go, or, you know what, since it's one nomination, can we vote by, or, um, accept by acclamation?
It is by secret.
So it is?
It, it says a secret ballot in the charter, so I think we need to complete the ballots.
Yep.
We will complete the process and not give anyone angst.
Yes, okay, very good. No, 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 here, well, I'll just give you the top.
Secret ballot.
Secret ballot, so that means I will fold it, and...
And councilmember Popkin, are you dialing? And Mayor, you have a unanimous vote in favor of, uh, Mayor Pro Tem McCoy.
Okay, great, thank you. Congratulations. Yes. Okay, um, councilmember McCoy.
Thank you, Mayor Idago Ferring, and that's a nice, uh, thing to say there. Uh, it's truly an honor of a lifetime, and it's, uh, something that I deeply, deeply appreciate from all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. So you will be my right hand. Gonna lean on it. Okay, um, so on to the second item, which is City Council, Longmont Housing Authority, Board of Commissioners, and Longmont Housing Renewal Authority meeting schedule, that was a lot of words, um, for twenty twenty-six.
It is, um, and you all have a copy of the same calendar that I have before me in paper in your packet. Uh, we have laid out a twenty twenty-six meeting schedule proposal. I don't even know if I'd call it proposal. It's a thought. Uh, January was set by the prior council, so the January meetings are set. So January, uh, sixth, uh, you have a LURA meeting, the thirteenth, a regular session, the twentieth, an open forum, and the twenty-seventh, a regular session. From there on out, um, when laying out this calendar, the only couple things I'd note are, um, we tried to keep regular sessions on second and fourth Thursdays, uh, and to keep, and we required to keep the two weeks between regular sessions as much as possible, so we can keep ordinances flowing through the process. When we have those back-to-back meetings, it, it creates challenges, as you know, and that's usually November, December. So there are, uh, I work to keep the two weeks between all regular sessions, so you'll see that in this, uh, calendar. And then, um, the other addition is with the addition of more regular Longmont Urban Renewal Authority meetings, which the council plus others sit as, and, um, the already-added Longmont Housing Authority, the proposal is to alternate those, uh, starting with LURA January, LHA February, LURA March, and so on and so forth. There would possibly be, uh, a need for called meetings based on a business need thereafter, and those would just be dealt with, I think, as they occur, as they come up. Lastly, and then I'll hush, and we can go through it, we are looking for direction on a council retreat date. When would you like that? After the election, before the election, one day, two day, that kind of thing? And I think, and if you would like another open forum, which you'll see is gonna be tough in just the way this calendar lays, it's just a calendar, the way the calendar lays out. So that said, if we look at February...
And then before you go on to February, I don't know if, um, councilmember Popkin wanted to address January.
Mm-hmm, please, thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, okay, I thought councilmember Popkin was talking. Okay, he waved, okay. So February, the first Tuesday would be a study session, the second Tuesday, the tenth, a regular, the seventeenth, which is, uh, the day following President's Day, would be a Housing Authority, Board of Commissioners, and then the twenty-fourth, a regular session. Also, you would have coffee with council, uh, as the current plan is, on the third Saturday of the month on, in the morning, uh, on the twenty-first. I'm seeing general agreement, okay? Councilmember Christ.
Continue, councilmember Christ.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few comments, I guess. For one, I noticed there aren't any pre-session scheduled. And for another, we have a, a study session each month, month, but oftentimes, study sessions result in a request for some kind of direction, uh, to staff. And it seems like we need a little more time for, um, deliberation in there. Also, the Housing Authority, I think it makes sense that we have it separate and oppo, alternating with, um, LURA. But I'm wondering if we have the expectation that that would only be an hour, and that we could maybe have a pre-session in there? Uh, you know, we're talking about time for deliberation, and we've already assigned ourselves a, a task for a pre-session. And the thing with, if we had deliberation before the study session, then we could have a better direction, because what I'm experiencing this last year especially is we'll come up with direction for staff on the study session, but then, you know, when it gets to the consent agenda or the, you know, between the first and second reading, maybe there's some adjustments, because we've had time to think about it, we've had more community involvement in it, and we maybe have had time to deliberate with each other. And I would like to minimize the impact on staff when it comes to that. Often, similarly, you know, sometimes we have a wild idea, and, um, maybe we need a little more time to come up with a scope of ideas before, before we say, oh, do this for us. What? So I'm wondering about starting with a study session, and I guess, let me back it up to January, maybe that makes more sense somewhere. Well, we really don't have time for deliberation in January. We have LURA on the sixth, and the regular session, and the open forum, and the regular session again. And then it goes right into a study session. So my question is a little bit more general. Does anybody have any ideas of how this would play a little bit better, give us more time to discuss before, before we have to give direction? And also, maybe, and that's why I'm looking at LURA and Housing Authority. The Housing Authority is going quite well, so a lot of it's kind of standardized now. That is perhaps a time where we could tack on a pre-session for an hour, then Housing Authority for an hour, maybe an hour and a half, and, and be able to get more, you know, traction on topics.
Don, did you wanna add, or?
So, so a couple of things.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I think it's hard for us to predict that the Housing Authority, well, I will tell you now, the LURA meetings, we can't keep to an hour. And, you know, depending on what's coming up, I don't know that we could say an hour on the Housing Authority. I think some may be shorter, some maybe longer. I do think that there's some development coming that could extend... that could extend those meetings beyond an hour. So A, I think, I can't say that we can keep it to an hour. B, in terms of the pre-session, the pre-sessions were a creation of the mayor. And so that's really a conversation with the mayor that we would need to have in terms of how that moves forward. Because the previous mayor made the decision to have the pre-sessions.
And so I ask that they not be included right now. Because I kind of want to rethink, I do want to rethink how we're utilizing these pre-sessions. And also where, where they would fall. Because as things come up, executive sessions, we cannot predict. So then, does it become a matter of, are these called meetings, pre-session meetings, for something pressing or something, you know, as you mentioned earlier, the motion that you had made earlier? Like that, that's a great opportunity. But if we go through a couple of months where nothing, which that never happens, but it's very optimistic.
Aspirational.
Aspirational, exactly. So then to have something set regularly, one thing I noticed in our pre-sessions was oftentimes we didn't have, people didn't have anything to comment on. And so we were, we weren't really getting... I feel like it could have been more, a more robust if it was structured a little bit differently. So I do want to consider that and think about, weigh that in. So it's not that pre-council or a pre-session is off the table. It's just not on here right now.
Well, maybe that's one of our first topics when we're gonna try to, you know, get some ideas going. So then I just have one other immediate comment, which is, it's gonna be kind of hard to squish in a retreat here where it makes sense. One would think that we would want to wait for the Ward III representative. But then we've got mid-year board recruitment that begins, a coffee with council, two regular sessions, and NLC right in the middle of that, you know? That could be a power month, I don't know, so.
So I'm gonna go ahead and hand it over to Councilmember McCoy.
Thank you, Mayor. There, there may be a logical time. You know, many people, as we come back from NLC, just like you came back with a lot of information, there may be a value to looking at, at a Friday, March 27th, 28th, Saturday 28th, where people, I know that's a lot of commitment from council members because we've got a regular session on the 10th. And then we have this National League of Cities, Congressional City Conference there. And some will leave on the 14th or 15th to get to that. And, and then we have a coffee with council. But sometimes, sometimes some months are gonna be more packed with, with things than others. And it would allow whoever is the new Ward III member to get a little bit of the orientation under their belt. But will you know, Don, legally, do you think you'll know by, you know, the following day? Or is there, what's the legal framework that you have to have? Do you have to have a certain number of days? Would we know by the 27th? Who would be there, a legal? Because I mean, it takes from basically the Tuesday in November to basically, what'd you say? Last week was the day, the final count?
Yeah, in my, it's a great question. And swear in, when we swear that person in, the charter isn't super helpful in this regard. We've had a little discussion about this. But in my layout of dates, I anticipated swearing them in at April 7th. Just because we would for sure have final results. Would we likely know the answer ahead of then? Probably.
Well, that then would maybe...
Most likely.
Explain, maybe then that, that kind of sets the tone of what we should be looking at and maybe thinking about April 10th or 11th. Or even moving that coffee with council to the 25th of April and doing the 17th and 18th to be, allow a person to get oriented.
That's gonna be a hard no on the 18th? Because that's my birthday? Just kidding, I'm totally kidding.
So you say, so you say. Whatever, no. I'm just trying, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Council, Councilmember Marcin.
Thank you, Mayor. Just as somebody who just went through the orientation process and had the privilege of meeting with all of our departments, it's a lot. And the way that they're structuring and the way that Harold and the team are structuring it, I think is helpful. But I know that that individual is gonna maybe need to take a breath for a minute. And if we're not talking about swearing in, because like I literally got into my email about 25 minutes ago. So I think there's a real kind of settlement process that maybe would be helpful. So like if we're talking a retreat date, which I am firmly supportive of a two-day retreat for this council to set our priorities, I would look to, you know, that 24th, 25th timeline, maybe towards the end of the month. I, you know, I'd be willing, April, towards that last kind of period in April. I'd be fine with the 17th, 18th as well, but I don't want to ruin Mayor's birthday party, so. No, no, I, in jest, but, but yeah, I'm, I think sometime, just, somebody just went through it to give them a minute, I think would be helpful.
Okay, Councilmember Popkin.
Yeah, thank you. I'm fine with either of those two April weekend, like end of weeks. But I might suggest that this group actually have, it's gonna sound weird, but like a pre-retreat, like maybe a half-day thing that's not a huge ordeal, but something where we can set some initial priorities and maybe start to work together, partly building off of Councilmember Chris's suggestion at the beginning of this meeting. What kind of formats do we want to set up for this to help guide staff on this? So we're not guessing going into it. And, and maybe use a little bit more, if we're gonna have a four-month window leading into this, let's use a little bit of that time to kind of prepare for the most effective retreat possible going in and then so that we can come out of that accordingly. So I would, I would suggest that, I'm fine with, you know, one and a half, two days in mid-late April. But I'd also suggest we do something February, March, like a half-day for this group. If anything, for this group to get to know some of the newer members better too.
Okay. No, I like that idea. I was also gonna suggest, and this is less appealing, that we do something earlier, you know, in February. And then just invite, or, you know, the candidates for that Ward III seat can, can be there and listen in. But, you know, the drawback to that piece is that they would not be able to weigh in. So those priorities are really not, they don't own those. So, but I really liked your idea on having something, a pre-retreat. Councilmember McCoy.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking at my friend Sandy Seeder, who I know has done all these sort of things and really pulls this together. And, and what, and tries to find the best fit. And we're making a lot of decisions in the next couple of months without this person. And unfortunately, it, it's just the way things have to be sometimes. And in light of the fact that I think that Sandy is the most amazing person when it comes to, well, so does Harold, I know. But in regards to making these sort of council retreats really truly valuable, I think we need to just make a decision that if we either to, the Mayor's point, have a, have that and invite these folks. I know that when we had our last retreat, Councilmember Marcin was there. And, and, and so he probably participated in conversations with people and things like that. And anybody who really values, values the position and the, and has an interest here would, would do that. And, and, and so I think that's, we, we roll out the welcome wagon to folks. But I just think that we probably really need to move it back to a time. Sandy is really able, is really good at pulling these things together. But she does need some run-up time to get it working. And, but I also think that things get put off. I mean, we have, we'll have some sort of thing that none of us on this council will think of. And, and really probably the best thing to do is, is think about that 13th or 14th, which, or that 27th or 28th of February. And just, just have the, have that and, and bring the folks that are here now together. There's three people who haven't been directly involved with a council retreat before. These other folks, if they're interested, will be there. They'll be hit the ground running. And they can do their orientation when they come onboard. And we'll just have to deal with that. But I just don't think that we, we should put it off. Because the, hey, there's three of us here that are teachers that have no, you put it off till the end of April, the beginning of May.
You're not gonna give the best.
And that will be, you know, you're not gonna get the best product of that.
Okay. Councilmember Christ.
So the 14th is Valentine's and it's also that President's Day weekend. But I'm wondering if maybe the 21st could be in a contender too? Because it's coffee with council. But if we're talking half a day, we try to finish by 11 with coffee with council. And then just could kind of have a, you know, have a space wherever you schedule for coffee with council and kind of take it over. But also the 27th or 28th would work as well.
If you wanted the 20th and 21st, we could move Coffee with Council to the 28th.
Yeah, we could kind of juggle that around a little bit. Hey, how, how long do you think the Lura meetings would go, Harold?
Based on the work that's coming at you, they're gonna be going for a while.
Like a three-hour meeting each night?
Two to three.
Yeah, okay.
It's hard to anticipate. Councilmember Marcin.
Mayor, before, I just want to chime in quickly and give you one other thought, just looking at timelines. Final results would be due March 25th, certified results for this election. So Sandy and I were just chatting on the side. You could, another, your retreat at last March 27th, 8th, we could swear them in at the retreat, hit the ground running. Just wanted to give you another idea.
That's an option, yeah. Been there, done that. Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Marcin.
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate Mayor Pro Tem McCoy's idea of trying to get this ahead. My only concern is, I look at that big board over there of council priorities. And I think about the work that we will actually do at this retreat and setting the stage for the next two years. And if we're gonna have a member of this team who's gonna join us, you know, a month or six weeks later, you know, if I'm that person, I would want to be able to have a say in what our council priorities are gonna be. So it's not so much, I guess, a thought as it is a question of, are we, you know, I like the idea of like a half-day, set the table with us, kind of what are we, maybe, you know, looser pre-session format. I'm all for those kinds of conversations. I would want to wait until we have that person seated to, in whatever format that takes. You know, we can swear them in, you know, at the pump house on the way to the, you know, wherever. I don't, I would, I, I would like to see us have that person seated and a full council before we set, you know, what is our big picture priority as a, as a team for the next two years? That feels, and if I were that person, I would, I would, I would appreciate that, I would think.
Very good. Okay, Councilmember Christ. And, yeah.
So, yeah, just building off of what Councilor Popkin said and then also our original conversation about asking for a time where we could discuss, you know, how we go about civic engagement and how we work together. That's what I'm thinking about for February. Because as we were talking about that, Councilor Popkin reminded us that we had talked about getting that under our belt first. And then probably more in March, after we have our Ward III representative, then we would be setting our priorities and what we're talking about on. I'm looking at you, Councilor Marcin, just responding to what you're saying is, I think, we start the plan for how we work together. And then we start coming, you know, when we have that seventh person, then we work on the actual details. Something in February and something in March.
Well, and then, so then, we had just made a motion to approve a pre-session for that very topic. So then, is it necessary then to have, unless, to have a February? Rather than the retreat day? And I'm gonna...
What we would do is with those, those, that kind of staff direction, Mayor Hidalgo Farin, is we get together and look at where that fits in the schedule. We understand that should be up and coming. And we will add that pre-session per your direction.
Okay.
Into this flow once we have a meeting schedule.
So then, should we hold off on trying to incorporate a pre-retreat? I, I think that, yeah, that's probably a good idea. And let's just settle in on the retreat date. You're wanting the retreat date, correct?
That would be extremely helpful.
Okay. The 27th, 28th?
So just thinking some of the items that are coming forward. So the challenge that you have when you have a new council member is there's certain things that we can't talk to them about until they're sworn in. And so if there's items on the retreat that relate to needing legal advice or something like that, I would, I would lean into like April 3rd, 4th, or 10th, 11th. Because otherwise, we're literally swearing in on, on the retreat date. I just think that when you think of things like housing and some of these other issues, there's a lot of depth behind it that may require some specialized briefings that I can give operationally. If there's legal pieces, he can't do it until they're sworn in.
Thank you. Councilmember Popkin.
Thank you. I'll try to make this quick. I'll simplify the April discussion. I'm not available the first two weekends of April. So that's off the table for me. So just putting that out there. Secondly, I'm learning from this discussion that we should never plan a wedding together as a group.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and third, I would lean towards, I think, the earlier the better, as long as the person's sworn in. So I'd lean towards the end of March, if that's still a reasonable option. Hopefully, we'd know pretty closely after the special election who that would likely be, even if they're sworn in, say, on the 24th. And we would just plan some meetings accordingly if there are certain topics. I can't look to staff because I'm not in the room right now. But I would, I would hope that there's some, if there's really pivotal legal or something really special topic that we can kind of prep someone on that would influence the retreat at that point. That would be my proposal, based on the feedback that I've heard from everyone, that we look to the end of March if that doesn't present a huge thing. Or we do one day and one day. Like we do our first day at the end of March and a second day at the end of April. Different approach to a retreat. But it does allow for a little bit more balancing of topics and sessions.
Yeah, so I, I think that idea works. I think, I mean, so here's, here's the piece that we don't know. Is it a close election? Is it not a close election?
Yes.
Is there a recount? So that's what we're, we're watching for. We could literally swear in as soon as we're comfortable, based on what the election's actually looking like. And it may be that, does this have to be sworn in on a, on a meeting? On a regular meeting or? So it literally could be swearing in on a Wednesday, to Councilmember Popkin's point. We're gonna start the onboarding, you know, immediately. And then if there's items that we think are coming on that require legal advice, we'll hit those first as staff. So I think we could work through that schedule. If the 27th and 28th works.
If the 27th and 28th. If the 27th and 28th. So really, there are two things, two, two schools of thought that I'm hearing is, you know, and really where we, as a council, need to decide. Is it more important that we have our council retreat earlier in the year or that we have a full council? And then that will also kind of, that will guide whether or not we do something earlier, before they're sworn in, and just invite them to, to come, come look or watch on, or do we wait until, you know, really toward middle or end of April?
Mayor, I was just going to wrap up one more comment, while I still kind of had the hand up or mic in this case, which is, I'd kind of look to you on direction on that, partly because you were the representative for that ward as well, up until you were sworn in here. So I, I would be curious as to your perspective as to like, how, how you could represent...
It would, it would be, for me personally, thank you for asking, I would, I, I would like to see a full council. There's nothing in our charter or in our rules of procedure saying we have to have a council retreat by date certain. But I know we're trying to, you know, we have new folks coming in, and so it's, it's a hard, but I think for me, it would, it's more important for me to have the council, a full council, to have the Ward Three representative there, and being able to, to weigh in on these issues. So I'm going to go ahead now that people have had a chance to digest this information. Again, Councilmember McCoy.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, based on that, and as crazy as it sounds to me, in regards to this, maybe May 1st and 2nd would be the...
That's radical.
It's very close to being radical.
And I don't mind coming in on my birthday either, so.
Right. Except it, it would allow people to kind of have that, and it'd allow us to have other priorities set, set before that. It's just, you're saying April 18th?
So, I, I am okay with April 17th, 18th, 24th, 25th. I believe Councilmember Popkin will be back in town by then.
Yeah, and I have, I have a big conference I'm putting on 2nd, 3rd and 4th of April.
Okay, yeah, so the beginning of April wouldn't work anyways.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm flexible with anything in that.
So I'm going to pass it on over to Councilmember Prieto.
Uh, yes, so I was just going to add a wrench into the works here. I don't mind having the, the retreat before the next council person comes on. And so what it sounds like, what might get this moving along here is maybe taking a vote as to whether we want the council person on during the retreat, and then taking, and then, and then we can decide whether we're looking before Election Day or after Election Day. I think that seems like it would, like, like, just the consensus would be like, let's wait, let's not wait, and then we can pick a date.
I think in this one, we don't need to have a formal vote. We can kind of take, we can take a consensus of where, of where people are. So what, what is your thought?
So I'm, I'm voting that we do it sooner. And I just say that because I think that it's, it's really going to be crash course for the next council person, and, and there's going to be a lot going on with the orientations, with onboarding, with them getting familiar with the different departments, and then having to get familiar with the new council. It, it just seems a lot, and I don't know that it would be that beneficial waiting, because they, they still haven't got their grounding under them. And so I, I would vote that we...
Then we can narrow it down to what weekend.
Yeah, and, and as a new council person, I would like to just hit the ground running and understand like what that work's going to look like for this year, and really start that, start that plan. And so, so I, I'm, I'm for doing it before in February.
Okay, thank you. And then, Councilmember Marcin, go ahead and weigh in.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a touch confused, because it seemed like staff, or at least Harold, there, the conversation at the table kind of looked like the 27th, 28th of March was where we were landing, and then it, we kind of went back.
Well, I think it was to get a consensus of where we're at.
Yeah.
And so...
Okay. No, that, that's fair.
Do you want a later one? Do you want a later one?
I, I, I really do feel, and I, I totally understand wanting to hit the ground running and get the work going. I really do feel that we should have a full council before we set our priorities, which is going to be a key thing, I assume a key thing that we're going to do in that retreat. If six of us are setting our priorities, and then we're just, all right, buddy, let's, you know, come along, let's figure this out together. You know, I, I don't feel like that's fair to, to our incoming Ward Three council members. So I would, I, I hate to keep running us back and forth. I, I would look back at that March 27th, March 28th date and say, if staff is comfortable and confident that they can get this person at least up to speed, as, in whatever form that looks like, and, you know, if we need to swear them in, you know, I got a backyard, you can come by anytime. Yeah, so, yeah, I, I would go back to that March 27th, 28th timeline, which is the date that staff seem to be discussing. But I am new and could be wrong.
No, that's, that's all right, thank you. And then, Councilmember Christ.
I agree with Counselor Marcing. I think the March 27th, 28th date works. We'll have our pre-session sometime in February. So we'll have amongst ourselves a little better working relationship, and then we'll have our, our Ward Three person in, in March is the goal.
Councilmember McCoy.
Well, I will not throw a mucky wrench into this. I'll go with the 27th and 28th of March. All I know is that that's probably going to be tough on somebody, but, you know, campaigns are tough.
Yeah. Logistically, will that work for you?
Mayor Higginson, my only mention would be that if there was, for some reason, some sort of a recount, then we would have to come back to you for flexibility. But that's the only situation I can think of that would not allow us to be able to make that work.
So then, okay, and then, so if need be, we can bump it out.
Certainly plenty of lead time for the staff topics.
So, Councilmember Prieto, I know you were the only one, are you?
Yeah, that's me.
Okay, okay, very good, thank you.
I'm just trying to get the ball rolling.
Yeah, yeah, nope, perfect, thank you. Okay, so now let's go on to the next month.
Hey, all right. Remember, we weren't done with it. February seemed okay. Maybe I'll just say this, this way. March, were there any, with the plan as laid out, were there any conflicts for council with the proposal? Adding the retreat to 27th and 8th of March? If not, I'll just keep going. And I won't forget, Councilmember Popkin has his hand raised?
Oh, thank you.
Still, yeah?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, all of this talk about when the retreat is going to be, made me think of something back in January. So sorry to take us back in time here for a second, but I wanted to suggest that we have a pre-session on, not, not a pre-treat, but like a pre-session to maybe the open forum day, where we can talk about our advisory boards and expectations for those. Unless we were going to have that sooner, I don't see that in the calendar.
I think that could be something that could be brought up at a, at the beginning of our meetings, when we want to add an agenda item. And I, I am working with staff on looking at that, so.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and then we'll get it, we can get that put in later, at a later time.
Excellent, thank you.
Uh-huh.
All right. Cooking with gas, moving on to April. Any concerns with April as laid out? April's pretty straightforward, pretty vanilla. May, the same. Two regular sessions, a study session, and then your Lura. Popkin has a question.
Okay, yeah, I have it over.
Yes, so the question changed for May. I was hoping we could switch, I was hoping we could switch because of my availability, the Lura meeting on the 19th with the study session on the 5th. If we could just swap those.
I think that's fine.
That's fine, yeah, because we don't, we don't have Lura the month before. So there's been enough junk of time.
Thank you.
June is a little bit busier because there's a conference, the big CML conference is June, so that affects a little bit how things fall. So we've assumed you want to cancel. Most council members tend to attend CML conferences. So we've adjusted, June has five Tuesdays, but canceling that fourth Tuesday and pushing that regular session to your fifth Tuesday. Otherwise, it should, should work unless there are any questions or concerns on June.
No, and are you asking us to decide when to have the Juneteenth festival?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope.
Okay.
I, I wasn't sure when it was going to be held. Shakita, I confirmed with her, it will be on the 20th. She and I have talked since, yep, since I drafted.
Perfect. We, we needed to bring her into this conversation.
Yes, yes. So July will hold as, or June will hold as is, then July has a holiday, the 4th of July doesn't affect your meetings. Second and 4th are regular sessions, a study session and a Lura meeting. The open forum, if you wanted to replace your study session that month, would be a spot to hold an open forum instead of your study session. Or August, you could also do that in August. Yeah, or you could do the beginning of June as well, as an open forum.
Wait, June is... I'm thinking...
If you want to do a second open forum. So if you, if yes, then tell us where.
Can I jump in here for a second, Mayor?
Hold on. So, yeah, hold on, I'll acknowledge you here shortly, put your mic up. So, last year, we did our open forum in July, is that correct?
We've historically done two a year.
Yes.
Most, most years, COVID was different.
COVID was different, yes. Okay, okay.
It's not required, it's a, not a required meeting in terms of your required, regular sessions are required, open forums are not required, but it's a, it's a tradition of council.
So I do want to know with a show of hands, who wants to continue with the second open forum? Okay, and then, Councilmember Popkin, no? Yes or no? Okay, he's marginal. Now you may, go ahead. It sounds like the majority of us do want to have the second open forum, but go ahead.
Yeah, my, the reason I was marginal there is I actually wanted to suggest that we talk about it in whatever, whenever we're discussing different forums and formats, to think about what kind of structure would be most productive to have.
So, but you're still...
That's why I didn't want to necessarily commit to an open forum as we've traditionally done, so that we can actually have that discussion early next, like in Q1, of what would make sense if we wanted to put on like a TBD day. I don't know if that's...
Yeah, I would like to bookmark something in, because that can always be changed. So in the event that we decide we're going with a different format for that open forum, we can just insert a study session in there, but we have it bookmarked. So that's, that's the, that's what I would like to see.
The July 7th study session would be six months, half a year from the, the first study session. So that might be a reasonable bookmark, not too close, not too far away. But up to you all, looking for direction.
July 7th, yeah. So, yeah, with a thumbs up or hand if you're okay with July 7th as the second open forum. So yes, yes? Councilmember Popkin? Okay.
All right, moving on to August. August, that last meeting is a regular session. It's a four-Tuesday month. We'll introduce the budget at that last meeting, and then you hit budget season in September. So if August looks good, I just want to check that August is okay, any conflicts there? Moving on to September, we do want to hold every meeting and not cancel any meetings in case we need those for budget presentations. We tend to hold that fifth Tuesday, that second study session that month. And we can always cancel it if the, if the budget presentations have concluded and there's no more presentation needed. But that's a, that's a busy month for y'all. So with that, does September look okay to you? That one has your Lura on the 3rd Tuesday. That one is going to be a time-constricted Lura meeting, because it will precede a study session. And we know that. Moving along, looking good, okay. October, straightforward, two regular, you notice these are on the 1st and 3rd, just to keep that every other, those two-week rotation going. I'm not seeing any concerns with October. November, we have holidays. So you, the councils typically councils for the week of Thanksgiving, so that is, we built that in and kept the two-week split for ordinances, keeping those flowing. So November, the proposal is the first Tuesday is regular, 2nd Tuesday Lura, 3rd Tuesday regular. No study session in November, and cancel that Thanksgiving week meeting.
Councilmember Marcin.
Thank you, Mayor. Just because I'm the new guy, I, so it is customary to cancel that week of Thanksgiving. My initial thought when I looked at it was, you know, do you throw, because we're losing a study session, do you want to add a study session? But I, I don't want to keep everybody here the week of Thanksgiving, so I'm, I'm fine with that. I just, I wanted, if that's customary, that's fine, so.
Yeah, I think with staff and, you know, people taking break, being gone. So it's, yeah. That, that's why, so it's less about us. Okay.
And I did, I did hear a comment on Election Day in November, because it's not a presidential election or a council election. There wouldn't, we wouldn't, we haven't typically canceled, unless it's our election or a presidential election, maybe. But you all could certainly direct us to do that differently. I'm going to jump past to December, Councilmember McCoy.
Comment, so we have a November, a comment for the November, Councilmember Christ.
Well, I am wondering about the NLC Summit in November, because it's in Nashville. And I think there's probably going to have to be travel time, like on the 17th.
We are required to have two regular sessions?
I know, I know, I'm just...
So, you know, the other option is, and I've done this before, is join virtually. We do have that, that option. Or you, you can be absent. I mean, unless we have a lot of. But it looks like it starts on the 19th. Yeah, unless you attend the pre, the university beforehand.
Yeah, it's slated to start on Thursday and the 19th.
That's how I ended up there on Tuesday.
Okay. So, are we good with November, for the most part? Okay. Okay. Yeah, go for it.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, some of these, we'll get to that point there, and we might need to, like you said, for the, the possible exception, either have somebody gone on the 17th, or zoom, zoom in on the 17th to make things work. But, but I think moving forward for the good of the cause is probably wise.
Let's go on to December.
We're almost there.
Yes.
December 2026. We typically cancel the last two meetings of the month, Christmas, New Year's week, because there's a lot of staff out, a lot of council traveling for holidays. So two required regular sessions, and then an LHA meeting there in the middle on the 8th. 22nd, 29th canceled. Any concerns, December?
No.
And then looking at January 2027, because we, this helps us plan as we come around the holidays to know what January looks like, because this is mostly for staff. I didn't put an open forum on the 5th. I didn't put an open forum in January 2027, so that would be a question. Would you like one? Is the 5th the right day for that? Or how would you like to do that?
Councilmember Marcin.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I would personally like to see us swap that study session for an open forum, even if we're just penciling it in, just to make sure that it's on the calendars. We look ahead, so we don't lose, and not that staff or us would lose track of it, but just to make sure it's there. I would prefer to have the open forum officially there on the 5th.
Okay. Does anyone else have, are we in consensus with penciling it on the 5th? Okay.
I think we made it through that item, Mayor.
We did, okay, yay.
What we will do is bring this back, add any edits we've made today, put it on your consent agenda next meeting, so you can formally bless it. Then we will move forward with, using this calendar for 2026. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And, oh, now we're on to the city council liaison, ooh, the Hunger Games. Liaison appointments to boards, yep. So, I, do you think we could get it in in about 10 minutes? Okay, go ahead. Okay, um, uh, go ahead. Um, Councilmember Marcin.
Thank you, Mayor, I moved that we extend the meeting beyond 11 o'clock.
Okay, so that was moved to extend the meeting by Councilmember Marcin, seconded by, um, Councilmember McCoy. All those in favor? Aye, okay, yeah, I think. Yeah, verbal vote? Yeah, okay, we're good. Okay. And then, um, Councilmember Popkin, is that a request to speak, or are you raising your hand that you agree to extend the meeting?
Request to speak.
Okay, um, is this about the next item?
It is.
Okay.
Procedurally, I was just, I guess, a point of parliamentary procedure here, are we required to make a decision on advisory boards this evening? Or is that something that is...
Um, I'm going to defer, I'm going to defer to, um, the one, the one in charge. Um, Don, go ahead.
There is not, uh, Mary Hidalgo Ferring and Councilmember Popkin, there's not a requirement per se, a written requirement. I will say that boards are already asking who's our person, so they can get, get you looped in, get calendared, bite sent, those kinds of things. But as a requirement, no, there is not a requirement, this is your process and you all may do with it as you choose.
Okay, thank you, um, continue.
Yeah, I guess I was just wondering if, if, judging by how our wedding planning went in our last item, if this is a good use of our time at this hour tonight, or if we want to start fresh in, in two weeks.
I, I would rather, I would rather, um, take the time tonight to, to get this done, and, um, I mean, I can defer to the rest of you all, do, um, is there anyone who opposes, who would rather put this off until another day? You would rather put it off, okay, so we have Councilmember Chris and, um, Councilmember McCoy.
I, I think there's some value to, uh, Councilmember Popkin's point. Uh, I think, uh, a, a lot of it is, uh, just after the wedding planning we just did, there's a lot of, um, value to actually rethinking, uh, uh, some of these and maybe, uh, maybe even, uh, reaching out to Don, uh, because I, that, to help, you know, streamline things too, ahead of time. You know, if, if you're looking at this, like, I realized, um, I, I had a mistake on, uh, a timing for like sustained, uh, for like a museum advisory board, uh, it wouldn't work in my schedule, so maybe somebody else would, would feel stronger about that, that type of thing, so. Those are sort of issues I think might be...
Would it be, and I'm trying to remember what happened last year, you kind of told us, you pretty much told us where, based on what we gave to you. So we weren't deciding, you know...
Which is what, if I might, this, this, um, the results of your survey that I sent out is sort of what I sent you, so if you, um, look, for example, Airport Advisory Board, um, Councilmember Marcin, that was his third choice.
Yes.
Um, and, and Councilmember Popkin had it as his fourth, so if, for example, off the cuff, uh, that were, that, that's a bad example, let me skip to the next one. Art in public places has one person interested in it, and that's Councilmember McCoy. That's an easy, low-hanging fruit, where we could just, if that works for his schedule, confirm, move forward and check those off that are low-hanging fruit.
Yeah.
And then discuss those like, um, my site is terrible at this time of night. Uh, Neighborhood Group Leaders, which has three people have that as their second choice, that's where the council might discuss. I would also add, we have a one-topic study session next week.
Okay.
Uh, you do have two executive sessions around that meeting, it's not a short night. Um, but we could certainly, you could, if you wanted to, to double-check your selections, send me any amendments.
Okay.
We could revisit next week.
That, that, that sounds good, um, I guess my concern was that as we go, some boards are going to be meeting this month, and they would like to onboard us, they would like to meet with us, I know I met with all, all of those folks.
Yes.
Um, so as long as we are able to have next, if we ho- push this to next week, would we have time to attend those and be ready to go?
You will miss some meetings in the rotation of how those meetings fall, it's also December and there's a lot of cancellations.
Lot of cancellations, okay.
So I don't, I don't foresee any major
Okay.
problems.
The only thing that I need to clarify is, is really the boards that the mayor's positions identified with, and so, um, as I'm looking at some of those, um, you know, Metro Mayor, Mayor's Caucus, Platte River, Northwest Mayor's, if you're committed to doing those, those are things that I, I just need to know, that are identified to the mayor.
Yeah.
If you're saying yes, I'm doing those.
I, I am committed to that one, as well as Dr. Cog, and I saw that the alternate, there's not even, like, it's in nobody's top five.
Right.
So I can also pick that up, I could pick up the, um, what was it, the commuting solutions, because nobody, I think it's important to have a presence there. Although we do have staff, but, so, yeah.
Yes, so for me, operationally, the big one is yours, because, those are boards where the mayor's on that we need, we need to make sure that we have those covered as we're moving forward, especially the transportation meetings.
Mm-hmm.
And Platte River Power, so.
Got it, yep, no, I'm committed to sit on those. Okay.
So Mayor, if you're comfortable, we can, please send me any amendments.
Do you want us to, um, move the staff appointments tonight?
That would be helpful, is so, we, we do have one amendment there. On commuting solutions, um, staff is requesting that be Jen Uten instead of Kami Edson, Kami in her, um, new role as Transportation Manager, is that her title?
So, and, and honestly, I mean, I, I would appreciate it on the staff positions, especially related to transportation, that if, um, you could designate me as the appointing authority for staff positions.
Okay.
Because I'm learning some things out of the RTD Accountability Committee, and, um, I need to change who's actually the liaisons on those boards, and, and just so you know, they're going to be people that are directly reporting to me. So, based on what's coming forward, on items that we have to deal with, and so I think I ask for Jen, but, um, if they're staff positions, I would appreciate the ability to have the flexibility to change them if I need to change them.
Okay, and do you need a motion or council to vote on this tonight?
You vote on the appointments, but give me the ability to change it as necessary from an operational perspective, I think that works.
Okay, okay. So, and then I did see on here, um, that there were a couple that were preferred to discuss. Did you...
That, well, those were, that was comments selected by Councilmember Christ, and I don't know what her comments were.
Yeah, so if you wanted to speak to those really quick. Do you like how I said really quick?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and I am really quick, actually, just wanted, I was, um, interested in these, um, one of them is the Boulder County Resource Conservation Advisory Board, which I was interested in, so I was just interested in hearing more about that particular board. And then, I can't see any longer either, what is the other one?
The Tourism Improvement District was the other one.
Yeah, and I just wanted to check in with Councilwoman McCoy, how is that going? Have you had one meeting yet?
We've actually had several meetings, and, uh, uh, I think they've been going very well, we're kind of, it's mostly organizational, and, and, and we've also lost Sarah Leonard. So, so that's a, uh, that's a, um, uh, uh, in process, but, uh, we've got interim director, and I think things are moving very well in that area, and, and I think, uh, uh, that the hotel members that are really interested and involved are really interested and involved.
Is, is Jen replacing Laura Moody? Uh, Laura Moody helped set up the Tourism Improvement District, but then she
No.
occasionally participates in the Visit Longmont side of it, but not the board, I think. So that was just my question about it. Okay, well, my answers have been discussed.
Do you want an, a motion or a direction?
Staff appointments?
The staff appointments and the ability for you to...
Yeah, I think if we could get a motion to appoint the staff appointment with Jen Uten, and then give me the ability on transportation-related items where we have staff to adjust as necessary.
Okay.
Do you need that in detail?
Yes. Okay, so, okay. So, did you want to read?
Oh.
Yes. And you know what, I realized I did not put your mic on, can you put your mic on to speak? Yeah, I was like, you sound so quiet.
Okay.
Go ahead and repeat that.
I, I move that we approve staff appointments and allow a city, the city manager to adjust transportation appointments as necessary.
Second.
Okay, so, um, the motion to approve staff appointments and allow city manager to adjust transportation appointments as necessary has been moved by, uh, Councilmember McCoy and seconded by Councilmember Marcin. Are we ready to, to move on to a vote? Okay. And then Councilmember Popkin, can you see your screen to vote, or can you give a verbal vote? Okay, yep, so he gave us a thumbs up. Okay, that carries unanimously, so we will...
We will address this next week.
Next week, okay, and, yeah, narrow down your first choices.
Please email me any amendments.
Yeah, yeah, email any amendments.
The results of the survey, or what would you like me to, so, um, go ahead, Councilmember Marcin, what's your...
Thank you, uh, I just could clarify, Councilmember McCoy and I, I mean, would you like just to resend it out, just the survey again, to retake it?
Oh. I, I will look at the best way to do that. If I, if you redo the survey, it may complicate and give me 12 answers instead of six. So let me look at it and I will email you, either requesting an email with your amendments, so I can incorporate those, or send it back out.
Okay.
I will get something back out to you tomorrow. You're welcome, thank you, no weddings.
Okay, yes, okay, thank you. Uh-huh, of course, okay. So, we are now on to final call, public invited to be heard, ah, yes, come on. Oh, yes. Go ahead and turn on your mic. Okay, yeah, perfect. Great. Mayor, Mayor pro tem, new council members, old council members, thank you for your service. I'm happy to, um, I'm not happy to give you my address, but I'll write it down for you if you need it. This is final call, so it's open to everyone. Thank you, I have lived just outside of town for 32 years, and I paid all sorts of sales taxes, used city services, businesses, restaurants, schools, et cetera, which have provided value to me and my family, and I hope that I've provided some value to the city. I also own a rental house in town, which, um, has provided of, an affordable rental for 26 years. Um, yet, folks like me have no, um, presence on city boards or commissions. And, um, I'd like you to rethink your policy about that and consider allowing somebody who is what I would call city-adjacent onto some of your boards or commissions possibly, kind of like what you're talking about, serving on regional councils. I think we really need a regional approach now in how we deal with city and county issues, and even maybe multiple county issues. Also, waiting to speak till this hour is uncomfortable, because I would like to have been in bed at about 8:30. Some of the things that people like me who live out in the farm country, you know, can provide is we provide farmer's market. You know, we, we are the ones who bring the goods to the farmer's market, we could possibly provide composting facilities. Um, we have regional transportation issues that we share. Um, I only live a mile and a half out of town, so I basically, this is my city. Um, let's see, we provide workforce, everything, you know, the same thing that people who live in the city provide, basically. And I know that that might be, there might be an issue of not paying city property tax, I happen to pay city property tax and city sales tax, but others maybe don't, but I hope that you will consider that, and thank you again. Thank you, okay, great, thank you. So, we have one up here, and then our, go ahead. Perfect, thank you. Yep.
Uh, Mayor and Council, our new mayor, um, I look forward to the few years that we're going to be sitting and talking to each other, um, thanks again, and again, I support fruit trees in parks, so let's get some fruit trees in some parks, and everyone can have an apple or two. Again, thank you, and see me, so it's late, I'll let you guys go, and again, Britney Spears' birthday, hey! Bye.
Great, thank you.
Mayor, Members of Council, Scott Sturte, June 9, Grant Street. I'd like to speak tonight about a Longmont Airport budget and operational transparency. Currently, the airport has the ability through the AMS, which is the Airport Monitoring Systems, to provide more transparent and complete reporting of relevant numbers. These reports need to be provided regularly to the Airport Advisory Board and the City Council, so the decision-making, uh, so the decision-makers have a better understanding when addressing the issues surrounding the airport and its impact on the greater community. Issues surrounding the airport go beyond the budget. The airport lease agreements, as well as the rules and regulations, are written and clear, but they lack enforcement. The narrative that the city can't do anything because the FAA grants is false. Frankly, nar- that narrative is used by those who wish to avoid conversations and accountability. This is a city-owned airport that should be serving Longmont, not abusing it. Before moving forward with the outside contractor for the landing fee study, there needs to be a more clear understanding of the question, questions being asked and how they align with the longer-term vision that the city has. Thank you all for your time and the effort to ensure Longmont continues to be a great place to call home. Thanks again.
Thank you. Okay, um, anyone else, okay. Let's go ahead and move on to Count, Mayor and Council comments, um, Councilmember Marcin.
Thanks, Mayor, I'll keep these, um, as, as brief as I can, I promise, Mayor Hidalgo Ferring, and I do take great pride in calling you, uh, Mayor Hidalgo Ferring, I just wanted to thank some folks before we get out of here, uh, for the record formally, first and foremost, my family, my wife, Becca. Those who've not had the chance to meet my wife, she's pretty amazing, and, uh, she's my hero in a lot of ways, and, and those of us who've been up here longer than me know that the sacrifices that families make for us to do this work is really critical, so I wanted to just say to her, thank you, um, my, my whole family, thank you for the opportunity, and I did want to specifically call out somebody who is not here tonight, because, uh, and that's my, my grandmother, Mary Gregory, who actually, um, tonight, in one of the weird coincidences of the universe, she was a third-generation Longmoner, born in Old Town Longmont, uh, at the old Longmont United Hospital in 1944, and tonight is the 13th anniversary of her passing. And in one of the weird coincidences of the universe, uh, her only grandson is the, sworn in on that same day as one of the youngest members of our council and recent memory, which is kind of a cool thing, so she gave the best hugs, and I miss her a lot, and somebody who taught me a lot about Longmont. Um, I'm just really excited to work with this team, and, um, Mayor Hidalgo Ferring, you especially, it's a real honor to serve with you, because I know I'm going to get the chance to tell... I know I'm going to get the chance to tell my kids that I got to serve with the first woman of color, the first Latina mayor in the history of the city of Longmont. It is not lost on me that 100 years ago, a city that was under the control of the Ku Klux Klan, tonight has a Chicana as its mayor, which is pretty awesome. So that's a pretty cool thing. Looking forward to doing this work. Thanks to staff, thanks to everybody for making it possible. And let's go, let's get to work.
Great, thank you. Councilmember McCoy.
Thank you, Mayor Hidalgo Ferring. And I like hearing that, too. I just want to remind people that the Habitat for Humanity, for St. Brain Valley, St. Brain Habitat for Humanity is having its Christmas home shows, the 5th and 6th. And the homes that are being shown are the Hoover Home Manor and the Callahan House and Sandstone Ranch. And they've been all dolled up for Christmas and so it goes to a good cause.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So I feel like I've said a lot. Do we have city manager remarks?
It's Mayor, council.
Oh, oh, and you know what? I apologize. So I'm just like, I had my papers in the way. Councilmember Popkin.
No problem. I, I just wanted to kind of make a comment here. I'm not sure when the right point of the process. I, I guess, I just want to make a comment that in the last, in the last meeting of the last city council, we had some, some very serious airport-related issues that, that didn't fully get addressed. And regardless of the decision that the council made that night, there were still some other issues that kind of need to be clarified going forward for that recent charges study. So I was hoping that we could have at some point in the very near future, some clarity there for staff direction. So I'll put that on the table, see if anyone has some strong opinions of that. If you want to reach out to me separately, let me know. Otherwise, perhaps I could put that on the pre-session agenda or study session agenda in the next month so we can provide some clear direction on what that's actually going to do and move that along exponentially.
Thank you. Now, no comments. City attorney remarks.
No comments, Mayor.
Okay. So do I have a motion to adjourn? Okay, so motion to adjourn was made by Councilmember Chris, seconded by Councilmember McCoy. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Nope, we are adjourned.